All the order for the city of Dunellen City Council meeting April 12th, 2021. We're beginning approximately 5:37. Would you all please rise for the ledgers?
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the purest and justest of all.
Please remain standing so we can have a volunteer who would like to this of a prayer. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It's a privilege for me to pray on behalf of the city of Dunellen. Heavenly Father, thank you for you, for loving all of us perfectly and completely, whether we believe in you or not. Thank you for your mercy, your grace, your forgiveness, your kindness, and your always blessing us. Thank you for these men and women here who serve you in the city of Dunellen. Bless them with vision and perseverance to do their jobs with honor and integrity. I pray your blessings over everyone in this room and their families and all the residents of Dunellen. And tonight, Lord, I want to say a special prayer on behalf of Ralph Estrada, who of Carmella's and the Lions Club, who for those of you who know him, and he is battling COVID-19 tonight. Father, in the name of Jesus, I pray for his healing, Lord. I pray that you touch him from the top of his head to the soles of his feet and that you restore him, Lord, to health, to good health. Father, bring him back. I pray against the enemy of disease that wants to ravage his body and take him out. So, Father, I thank you and I invite your spirit of healing upon him tonight, Lord, and then you bring comfort to his family. And I thank you, Lord, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you so very much. Please be seated. Ms. Roberts, can you begin the call, please?
Yes, Mayor White. Mayor White.
Oh, present.
Nice, Mayor Hancher. I'm here. Councilwoman Williams is absent tonight. Councilwoman Kenny.
Here.
Councilwoman Covich. Roy Slattery, Public Works.
Here.
Jan Smith, Finance Department.
Here.
Teresa Malmberg, Community Development.
Here.
Julie Danowski, Clerk's Department.
Here.
City Attorney Andrew Hand.
I'm here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website and City Hall Bulletin Board on Thursday, April 8th, 2021. I'm sorry, Chief. Chief McQuaid is here as well and Lieutenant Yawkes.
Okay, before we get started with the meeting, I want to go over a few ground rules for those of you that possibly are new and a refresher for some that have been here. At this time, if you have any electronic device that may be activated during this meeting, this is a good time to turn that off. If you plan to speak this evening, we would appreciate it if you would sign up in the lobby. If you sign up, you will get first preference to speak. If you don't, if you do not sign up, we still will offer you the courtesy to ask before we go to the next item if you would like to speak. The first part of speaking is if you would like to speak to something that is not on the agenda, that will be your opportunity right at the beginning of the meeting to speak something that's not published. If it is on the agenda, then you should wait until the agenda item comes up to speak to it. These are recorded meetings, both with video and audio, and it also is closed captioned. So it's very important when you come up and speak to speak directly into the microphone, speak loudly. So those that are listening from afar and are closed caption people can can record it. So that takes takes pretty good care of that. And then a reminder to council that we do operate our city council under the Roberts Rules of Order. Roberts Rules of Order signify that the chair does conduct the meeting. And in order to speak, you should wait till the chair acknowledges you. You should not be interrupted by another council person until you are finished meeting, speaking. And once everyone has had a chance to speak, you will be offered a second opportunity to speak to the subject. At that particular time, when everybody has had two chances to speak, I S. Chair will try to move it to the next level, whether it's vote or whatever. If council disagrees with the chair trying to end debate, a vote can be taken to overrule the chair and to continue the debate. I think one of the things council is very aware of, that the public and ourselves, you know, want our meetings to be thoroughly discussed, thoroughly vetted out, but we don't want the meetings to drag unnecessarily into late, late hours. So it's courtesy both to the public and ourselves to try to expedite the meetings the best we can. So with that said, we've done roll call, we've done the other things. Does council have any comments regarding the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay, no comments. Okay, so good with the agenda as it is. And I do, before we get started, I do want to thank the attendance. This is a pretty big crowd tonight, which we really embrace. Okay, now where we're at is the public comment. If anybody would like to speak to a non-agenda item, if you've signed up, Mandy will call you up. If you haven't signed up, I will offer you an opportunity to speak up to three minutes on any subject you would like to speak to that is not on this agenda. Ms. Roberts, do you have anybody who has signed up?
Teresa Malmberg.
Please name an address when you come to speak.
Teresa Malmberg, 22925 Southwest 117th Street, Dunellen, Florida, and 20750 River Drive. I want to speak to something that, two things that are near and dear to my heart. I want to start with a quote by Josiah Royce. He's an American philosopher from the 1700s. "Interfere with the reality of my world, and you therefore take the very life and heart out of my will." A city has many hearts. Its citizens, its business owners, their buildings and the roads they travel, the new business applicants, the new construction, their contractors and tradesmen and women, the special geography and topography of the land, the animals who inhabit the lands and rivers, the tubers, the kayakers, the boaters, the swimmers, the fishermen and women, the children playing and laughing, the staff who manage, maintain, and provide a service to all. The central heart of the city. From this heart comes managing, operating, transitioning, informing, organizing, arranging, processing, protecting, overseeing, including, developing, recording, reviewing, conferencing, communicating, enforcing, permitting, explaining, teaching, serving, planning, participating. Rinse and repeat. Community development, planning, and zoning needs to cease stations temporarily until the position of community development manager is filled. Insinuations such as those made in recent meetings suggesting the non-urgency and the need to do more noticing and advertising are completely unsubstantiated. The degree and detail to which this position has been noticed is beyond reproach. Recent and historical remarks during public meetings have impaired our ability to recruit and retain a highly qualified person to manage this department and the central heart of this city is in cardiac arrest. The central heart will no longer be able to operate proficiently or professionally without a community development manager. Further commentary noted the need for formally educated, certified individual in the position of community development manager. Had we embraced an applicant who had not only years of experience as a senior planner and credentialed as an AICP whose experience is in our very own county and neighboring city, perhaps we would have had just that. Ladies and gentlemen, this attitude of distrust and conspiracy. Mr. Mayor, may I continue?
Please.
Ladies and gentlemen, this attitude of distrust and conspiracy thinking has to stop. However, it may be too little, too late. My father and mother taught me and my brothers a strong work ethic and to finish what we start, but not if it leads to peril. Well, we're certainly at a point where it may lead us to peril. It is up to the council to come together, since it is now council's authority to hire department heads, to attach the defibrillator and restart the heart of community development. For now, serious consideration of a moratorium on any new development, and that is commercial, must be considered. I am not qualified nor am I compensated for the additional responsibility of such an undertaking as community development manager and the responsibility that goes with it. And I would like to end this segment with a couple of quotes. It's from a website called despair.com, but don't let it disparage you. It's actually very encouraging on the opposite end. Fragility. Inside every snowflake is a perfect, unique meltdown just waiting to happen. And stress, just look for me, us, city staff, somewhere beyond the limits of human endurance. And finally, the second item. I want to comment on the future of the Police Department building. This project, as most everyone knows, has been around for more years than I've lived or worked here. I started at Public Works in 2007, and Anthony Santa Cross, the former Public Works Director, Manager, was receiving condition complaints back then concerning the mold, electrical roof, and other structural issues. You cannot put a Band-Aid on an open wound. You like, I like metaphors. Little or no interest in funding any type of major repairs was a major roadblock then and still seems to be today. The poor condition of the building is well documented. There should be no more roadblocks. Keep moving forward, please. No more delays. Linda Fernandez's legacy is the future Police Department being in a safe, clean environment with plenty of space to accommodate our beloved officers and staff and a community meeting place to boot. Let's put some positivity in this city. Thank you. And by the way, nobody put words in my mouth. I speak for myself and I say what I think. Thank you very much for your consideration, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
Toria Peterson.
Queen Peterson to you, Mandy.
Victoria Peterson, 2980 Southwest West Water Drive, 34431 Dunellen, Florida. Hello, everyone. My name is Victoria Peterson. I am your 2021 reigning queen of the rainbow. I just wanted to come up here and introduce myself to everyone formally, and I am very excited to serve my community in any way that I can. I do apologize that I will not be able to stay for the entirety of this meeting due to family matters, but I am very excited to be the change that I wish to see in my community. Thank you.
Congratulations.
That's all I have to say.
You did well.
Thank you for coming. What a, what a treat. Thank you for coming.
Okay. Wally Dunn.
My name's Wally Dunn. I live at 111386 Southwest Hendricks Drive. I have a matter that's bothered me for quite some time, and I'm gonna try to lay it out for y'all the best I can. We have a police sheriff in a Florida highway, or excuse me, Florida wildlife that patrols the Rainbow River. They generally go on the river early in the morning, and they're off by 3:00 or 3:30 in the afternoon. In front of my house, every afternoon between 4:00 and dark, sea dos, jet skis do not abide by any speed limit. People were skiing on the river yesterday, all day in the rain. Okay? I think it would be the who of us, since we have an agreement with the sheriff and our police department, that somebody gets on this river at 4:00 and stays till dark. If they did that, they could write more tickets than they do sitting at our entrance to our city on 484 and 40. And we could sure make a lot of money, because I'm telling you, yesterday was a joke. These kids were up and down the river. They're in a red boat with white trim. I've seen them numerous times, and they're skiing on the river. Okay? I think that's a little ridiculous. The sea dos wait till 4:30, and then they come down the river from up at the Springs, and they aren't abiding by any speed limit at all. It is extremely dangerous. Now, yesterday, no one else was on the river except these clowns skiing, but if we're gonna have a speed limit, we need to have a speed limit. Okay? If we don't want a speed limit, that's fine, then I'll get in my pontoon boat and I'll go as fast as I want to. But I'm very tired of every afternoon when I'm sitting on my dock on the river and I'm watching this go on, and there's no one patrolling the river, because me and everybody else on that river knows around 4:00 the law enforcement is off the river. Okay? I'm just saying, something needs to happen, or somebody's gonna get killed. And this is a little bit of a joke. In addition to speeding, there's numerous instances of people, let's say, partaking of adult beverages and very intoxicated, and that generally is later in the day. So I really don't understand why our police and sheriff and wildlife group get off the river around 3:00 unless they just don't want to address it. So it'd be nice if the city council would try to come together and address this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Much appreciated. Roberts, anyone else?
Like David Lancaster?
Sir Lancaster, you're a pretty tall guy. How about angling that microphone up a little bit so we can hear your booming voice? There we go. There we go. How about that? David Lancaster, 11906 Walden Lane, Dunellen, Florida. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I wanted to address the Police Department. I watched the council meeting last week. It was a workshop, I believe it was, and several questions were brought up and solutions, and and so I came down and got the building inspection report from the city this afternoon, and going through it, there's just a plethora of problems at that building. And it doesn't go in, it didn't test for mold, and so I'm curious about that, but it talks about cracks in the building, the roofing, the ductwork, the age of the air conditioners, the storage, the rodent intrusion, and it just seems like that it would take a substantial effort to make that building whole. If y'all would consider that the new building that was bought, the church for the city council room and the Police Department to utilize, the outside offices on either side of the building are in fairly good shape, and if those offices were to be painted, could be painted relatively inexpensively. There's two bathrooms there, and if they widened one door and made that ADA compliant for handicap folks, I think that the police will be in a much more stable situation and a safe situation. I look at putting money into the existing building, which has been there for years with problems. That would be like investing money in a liability versus investing money in an asset. And so you're gonna spend money to get the Police Department up and running. I would encourage you to put the money where it's gonna go forward. And to put money into the building to make it have a resale value, I don't think there's much bang for the buck there. If you fixed all the problems, I don't think you're gonna increase the value of the building. In fact, if I was to buy that building, I would probably raise it and, you know, tear it down and start over. Yeah, no. So I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Belinda Atherton.
Good afternoon. My name is Belinda Atherton, and I live at 21271 West Highway 40, Dunellen, Florida, 34431. My husband and I are the managers of Open Village, and Open Village is a 55 and older mobile home park. We have approximately 180 people living in Open Village, and I think that I read there were maybe 2,000 people in Dunellen. So we take up a big chunk of the citizens. Things are, since the pandemic especially, things have gotten a lot more expensive, and people are trying to save money. Our elderly, there are a lot of them that are living off social security, so they're trying to get by. One of the things that we would like to bring up is that we would like to have golf cart, bicycle, walking path between Powell Road and our entrance, so that we can, instead of driving, and a lot of people don't need to be driving, they can use a golf cart and get to the businesses in Dunellen. And that's what I would like to bring up tonight. That would be a good for our elderly, and I think it would be a good thing also for Dunellen. It would be safer and that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Good to meet you all, too. Roberts, anyone else? Hey, is there anyone in the audience that didn't sign up that would still like to speak? Yes, Ms. Dunn, please.
My name is Kathy Dunn. I live at 11386 Hendricks Drive. My thinking is, since 2010, our population has only increased 145 residents to 2021. And if we had all the money in the world, we could have a new police station. We could have 20 police officers. But we have not put any money back into the infrastructure of this town in the past 15 years. And I think that before we spend any money, we all want everything. Before we spend any money, we ought to ask the residents by polling them what they would rather have. Would they rather have infrastructure, the streets fixed, and a bigger Public Works Department, of which we've got three people right now? Or would they like to have a $1.52 million police station and 15 policemen? It just boils down to what you can afford and what would help the city most and what the residents want. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak? Julianne, please.
Hi, Julianne Mendonza, 11894 East Blue Cove Drive. And I like the beginning comments because it's kind of a potpourri, so I wanted to talk about conduct. I think the mayor spoke at the workshop about revising of language on how the public approaches the council people and what the exchanges are like, revising language to assure fairness and respect as the public approaches all of you. Last year, I spoke to the council about code of conduct and ethics as it related to the way that the council was treating the public at that time, and I acknowledge it was a little bit of a different configuration for the council. At that time, the attorney had offered free education on the topic because the council was struggling amongst themselves on how to agree if and how that code applied to themselves. This was right around election time. So I don't know if that education happened, but I hope that as all of you are working to revise and laminate and repeat the expectations for the public's treatment of you, that you're equally considering your treatment of the public and your treatment of one another. Your words, your body language, your responses, or your lack of response really send a message that impacts the working relationships between the council and the city going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Julianne. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak before we move into the agenda? All right, looks like we have everybody. I want to thank everybody for those comments. I think each and every one of those comments were very well thought through, spoken concisely. A lot of good stuff to absorb. I think we'll all have to go back and re-listen to all those. That was a lot of good stuff. All right, now, just to help you out here, we're gonna go into the consent agenda. The consent agenda are items that council has already discussed at the workshop, and we're pretty much in agreement. So before we go and it takes us through number one through number eight. So before council considers accepting those eight items in one fell swoop, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to any of the items that are on the consent agenda? That's one through eight. Give me a couple seconds. Okay, if there's no one that has, would like to speak to item one through eight, which is the consent agenda, we'll move. Do we have a motion by council?
Some move.
To accept the consent agenda, Vice Mayor seconded by Councilwoman Covich. All in favor?
Right.
Post. Ms. Roberts, please note that is a unanimous approval of consent agenda. And now we're at number nine. We just went through one through eight with that one vote. Resign a proclamation, number PRO 2021-04 Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month to abate of Florida Horus Chapter. So at this time, Ms. Roberts, do I read proclamation?
Either you can or I will, whatever you want.
You'd like to read it?
Proclamation number PRO 2021-04 Motorcycle
Can you blow that up just a little bit, just so everybody can read it? Please, excuse me. There we go.
Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month. Whereas motorcycle riding is a popular form of recreation and transportation for thousands of people across the nation, with the state of Florida's mild climate and scenic roadways make motorcycle riding an enjoyable experience throughout the year. And whereas growing populations, seasonal residents, and travelers using Dunellen roadways make motorcycle safety an important issue for all drivers, and the safe operation of a motorcycle requires the use of special skills developed through a combination of training and experience, the use of good judgment, and a thorough knowledge of traffic laws and licensing requirements. And whereas it is incumbent upon all vehicle drivers to respect the safety of motorcyclists and to share the roadway, whether on a motorcycle or in a vehicle, eliminating distractions is critical to reducing motorcycle crashes and fatalities. and fatalities. And whereas motorcycle organizations, clubs, dealerships, groups, and highway safety officials in our county are encouraged to join the Florida Rider Motorcycle Safety Program, abate of Florida Incorporated, and all motorcyclists in actively promoting safe operation, increased rider training, improved licensing agreements, and motorist awareness. And whereas the Motorcycle Safety Foundation has designated the month of May as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month, as recognized by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration and the Governor of the State of Florida, to encourage other motor vehicle operators to be cautious and observe these smaller vehicles in Marion County streets and highways. Therefore, be it proclaimed, the City of Danellen hereby proclaims the month of May 2021 as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month. Pass and proclaim this 12th day of April 2021.
Good. Is there a Mr. John Mullen?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, can you go back?
Why are we bringing him out in front of the podium? Where's Julie Mancini when we need her for organization?
I say thanks, sir.
I would like to give those lines to the members who spoke to the council during that. We have four signs, then once a plaque or three times, that contact information passed on the court before the meeting. I'll probably be over here next week or this week, the week after, visiting some of your businesses, passing out signs and requests from people displaying both our state identity during the month of May. And I'll have information on time there.
Thank you.
All right, that was nice. Let's move on now to item number 10 on the agenda. It's to also to present a proclamation, number PRO 2021-05 National Day of Prayer to Marilyn and Pastor Tom Welsh. And Ms. Marilyn, thank you for your beginning prayer. We really appreciate that, too. Ms. Roberts, would you like to read the proclamation?
Proclamation number PRO 2021-05 National Day of Prayer. Whereas prayer to the Almighty God is regarded by millions as the most important utterance of mankind for its benefit. And whereas our nation was founded by single-minded men and women seeking wisdom and guidance through prayer to the God who has ears to hear. And whereas prayer has aided us all in times where support and guidance was needed. And whereas it is fitting that we should give thanks for the freedom and prosperity which our nation and state enjoys, and to pray for the continued guidance and comfort which God has graciously bestowed upon this nation since its inception. And whereas the day of prayer is a time set aside for Americans to pray to their heavenly Father and to reaffirm the spiritual principles upon which our nation was founded. And whereas the state of Florida and the United States of America can and will benefit from prayer by its faithful and prayerful residents. And whereas our theme this year is love, life, and liberty, taking from Corinthians 3:17, which says, "Now the Lord is the Spirit, and where the Spirit of the Lord is, there is liberty." And whereas across our land on May 6, Americans will unite at specific times in prayer for our nation and state to acknowledge our dependence upon God, to give thanks for the many blessings our country has received from Him, to recognize our need for personal and corporate renewal of moral values, and to invoke God's blessing upon our leaders. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the City of Danellen, City Council, the City Council of the City of Danellen, Florida, does hereby recognize May 6, oh, we made it a good, 2021, as the National Day of Prayer, and urges all citizens in Marion County to pray with diligence and seek the face of Almighty God to direct our paths in the days and years ahead. Pass and proclaim this 12th day of April 2021. I apologize, the date in that last sentence is wrong. We'll get that corrected before we finalize this for the record.
Ms. Marilyn, Pastor Tom, would you come up?
Here's your proclamation to sign by the mayor, the vice man, the vice chairman, the alibi and job. Councilwoman Williams, Covich.
Marilyn, thank you for all you did on Saturday.
Those are actually the fun parts of being on council. It didn't get any better than that. All right. Now we are moving on to, we are at now agenda item number 11, Community Liaison Program Presentation, Julianne Mendoca and Marisol Conkle. Please come on up and name, address, and... Laura Scherz.
Julianne Mendonza, 11894 East Blue Cove Drive. So yeah, the topic is community liaisons. And I put this by the door back in September in the Riverland News. Three of our now new council people created this new vision for Danellen. And it was in the newspaper again in September. And it was kind of the things that were gonna guide the new council and the, you know, the kind of the hopes, the new vision for the city. So the first, the very first thing in the vision reads, "Public Participation and Transparency." And it says, "We welcome public input and strongly believe that Danellen residents must play an active role in the future of our city. We will ensure that the city website is current, user-friendly, and encourages residents to participate. We will listen to the people. We will conduct ourselves to the highest professional and ethical standards. So as a city resident, I know that this vision can't be realized until the council members begin to hear and listen to the voice of the residents loud and clear. It's in this spirit that we've begun to identify volunteers that will be the connectors between our city neighborhoods and our city council. Liaisons will ask questions, they'll talk to neighbors and share information, and they'll encourage people to attend city meetings. They'll learn more about city codes and be active in projects that will better each community. Maybe they'll vote or even run for council one day. Liaisons will be a key to weighing in to all of you on decisions impacting their communities. By organizing ourselves and working together, we can be more educated and informed, we can take action, and help the city council clearly understand the will of the voters who elected them. I don't pretend that getting people excited about city business is easy. Historically, residents haven't always felt heard or included in big decisions. I was recently telling someone about this liaison effort and they stopped me right away. Do you really think this is gonna work? With a heap of optimism, I responded, "We won't know if we don't try." So we hope to introduce new liaisons to you in the coming months to represent the communities of the Blue Cove, Rolling Hills, the Granada, Danellen Heights, our two gated mobile communities, Vought Springs. So I was pleased to hear from Belinda tonight in Oak Bend. I know she had to leave, but I think she was our community liaison without even knowing it. So I'm pleased tonight that we're gonna hear from a volunteer liaison from Rolling Hills. And I'm gonna turn it over to Marisol Conkle.
Have PowerPoint.
Name and address, please. Name and address, right?
Yes, my name is Marisol Conkle and I live at 101170 Rolling Hills, sorry, Southwest 188 Circle, Danellen 34432. And for the people that don't know me, my name, I am the community liaison on Rolling Hills Apartments. And I've been since 2019. The complex is located at 11150 Rolling Hills Road. The zip code is 34431. As you can see, I have provided map. It's very easy to find. You just go on Find Bank of America Off 41, and then you go all the way down, see the Christian Academy, take a right, and then you take another right, and you're gonna see the community complex. We are owned by Flame Management Corporation, and we provide rental assistance for the low-income families. We provide also incentives for the student, elderly, and disabled, as long as you qualify for those benefits. Composed by 67 units, in which 57 bedrooms are two-bedroom and only 10 are one-bedroom. Our waiting period currently is about three years, up to five years from one-bedroom, and for two-bedroom, around two to four months. It's a very lovely, quiet neighborhood, and we do have fast emergency response from policemen and firefighters. Also, we have done a full complex renovation in 2004, in which I have provided before and after pictures. As you can see, next one, please. As you can see, we have done full painting, full restoration of the roof. We have added parking bumpers and our stoppers. We have done concrete edges around the full lawn as well. Next, next one, please. There's more pictures. So you can see there's a big, big difference out there. And in general, our complex is very beautiful. I do not, I cannot say that it's not. The only problem right now is our roads. Next one, please. We can see the roads is just awful. I mean, the potholes are so big. They have come in and patched it and just last like two months. And now we have residents coming on to me thinking that I can do something which, you know, the city should be doing, something to fix those holes. There's even more pictures, but I couldn't take too many because, I mean, they just keep going. Also, I would like, before I leave, I would like to mention a few things about the city, if I may.
Please.
So when I moved here about two years ago, I didn't think much about the looks of the city, honestly, until one day invited my family and friends. And the first thing I received was a call from one of my friends. And the first thing they said is, "Are we in the correct place? This place looks rough. This city looks abandoned." And I felt horrible. That's when I realized that we needed to do something. I personally believe that this small town has a lot of potential, especially because we have hundreds, if not thousands, of tourists as well as residents that visit the river, especially in summertime. We see a lot of buildings that could have been used or rebuilt to those in need. I mean, we could help the homeless. We can do, I don't know, after-schooling tutoring for those students that need it. I also believe that we should prioritize the look of our buildings and enforce the city codes to attract more people, and not only for tourists, but for potential new residents as well. I didn't know until this morning that we have at least, what, two to three at the works department. I mean, that explains why the city looks so bad, right? I mean, it's not that they're not doing their job, but that we need more staff if we want to see a change. The last thing, I researched a little bit about the police department a while ago, and I came across to this article and it says something about voting for a new police department building or something close to that. And even though they do an excellent job, we do not need a bigger police station or more policemen. We should help the people in need with some of those funds by providing other services or rebuild the structures for more business to prosper, get the works department, department more staff in order to fix up the city, as well as the roads and so on. So yeah, that is all I wanted to say. And I know some of you might feel the same, so please do not be afraid to speak up. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question before you leave?
Yes.
You have 67 units in...
67 units in total.
So out of the 67 units, how many total people do you think lives within your house?
In that roughly total, about 100 people.
Oh, 100?
Yes.
Quite interesting. We've had two representatives from two of our major villages complexes. And when you add up the total number of people, it's 200, and yours is 100, that's 300 people.
Yes, it's a lot.
Out of a city of less than 2,000, right?
Yep.
And I would say most...
It's a big chunk.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a lot of votes right there, right?
Absolutely.
Right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments from council?
Apartment 28 was my very first apartment. I was one of the first occupants over there back in 19...
The new renovation, I mean, we did a lot including...
It was very new, so it was perfect.
Yes.
And they had cable TV and nobody else in the town had cable. It was quite popular. You know, it's a nice area. I think we do have a lot of road going on in there because of the festivals that go on during October and such. And those roads are going to be probably addressed, just for your knowledge, because we are getting ready to have the new Baptist church go over there. And so the roads will be, that can be part of the development of that as well. So they'll be having to probably widen the roads and those types of things for turn lanes and such. So not a forgotten area.
That's in all that.
You know, our police department and our public works department are always on top of whatever they can be. So welcome.
Thank you.
And before you leave, Covich, you, on presentations, we can ask questions of the presenters if you...
I would like, sorry, I would like for you to perhaps even poll your residents on exactly their stand on police station versus road improvement.
Absolutely. That would be a good idea.
Yep, and come back with the results, please.
And we can get you the facts that you need for that information to them. All right.
Ms. Kenny, do you have a comment or question?
It's great to see young people. It's great to see from people we have not spoken to in the past. We're seeing more and more people who are participating in our government. And that has got to be positive for all of us. And while we come from different places and we have different opinions, usually things do tend to end up in compromises. But definitely, it is a positive sign for our future. And I appreciate you being here.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, and we hope, we hope we see you regularly.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Very good. All right, folks, we are now going to item number 12. Local mitigation strategy, five-year plan, 2020 presentation by Mr. Ken Odom, Marion County Transportation Planner. Welcome, Mr.
Thank you.
Name and address and your...
Marion County, Grist Services. My name is Kenneth Odom. My address is 2710 East Silver Springs Boulevard, Ocala, Florida 34470. First off, I'd like to say I've been here many times. I'm in a little bit of a different capacity this time. It's nice to see some familiar faces and some new faces as well. Usually I was over here talking about roads or multi-use paths, bridges, things of that nature. I'm now with Marion County Planning Department. I have been for a little over two years. And I've been charged as a project manager for a resiliency group that is actually statewide and federal, sponsored by FEMA, and also the state of Florida through different projects and different programs. Local mitigation strategy is, doesn't really sound exactly about what it is. It's resiliency, it's preparedness for disasters of all different types. Something that affects us and some of the data that we've run here would be wildfires, reverine erosion, floods. riverine erosion, floods, proximity to major rivers, hurricanes, tornadoes being so close to the Gulf of Mexico. Basically, this is a simple statement here. Marion County as a whole faces a variety of different types of potential hazards. And they're different in different parts of the county. There are currently five different municipalities in the county themselves that actually participate in this program. The city of Dunellen, city of Bellevue, city of Ocala, the town of McIntosh, and the town of Reddick, and then Marion County as a whole. Basically, what this plan does is it allows for the distribution of federal emergency funds, also preparedness funds, to those municipalities when they participate in this program. Next slide, please. This is, the little graphic that you see on the right is kind of a basic breakdown of how it works. You can see that whatever the event is, is on the far right side. This is how it actually works out, okay? You have an event, let's just use a hurricane for an example. Obviously, you're going to have an immediate response after the fact. Then you have recovery, and then what do you do? You prepare for the next hurricane. We saw this very, very easily back in July, or excuse me, of 2004. And that's what happens at those points. Mitigation, you decide what you need to do, and then you move into a preparation phase in order to prepare for that next disaster of several different types. Actually, with that being said, I do have Sergeant Preston Bowlin here this evening. He's in charge of the Emergency Operations Center. I wanted to introduce him to all of you if you do not know him. My deputy director here is also Joanna Kautu. And they have both been working on this as well. I don't know if Preston, Sergeant Bowlin will like to come up and take some questions. He's got a couple of moments before he has to leave. Oh, sorry. He is the Director of Emergency Management, so. Next slide, please. Basically, where this all derived from was back around 1999, a little bit before that. There was, state of Florida was actually addressing hurricanes in a very unique fashion. And it was something that FEMA took notice of. And they started trying to allocate different sources of funding to preparedness and hardening and mitigation of disasters, actually before they happened. Several programs have come out of that, funding programs. One is called BRIC, which we'll go over some of these a little bit more detail in a moment. That's building resilient infrastructure for communities. Florida, our flood mitigation, and then also hurricane mitigation grant programs. These programs are typically handled through your Grist Services Department or Public Works, depending. And the way this works is you submit applications to the local mitigation strategy committee, which is comprised of a number of different individuals from a number of different backgrounds within Marion County. We score those, we prioritize them in a set order, and then they're moved on to the state for consideration of funding. Next slide, please. And that's exactly what I was kind of going over a little bit there with the process of what we were, what I was just talking about. Basically, what you're doing is you try to identify what hazards. Critical facilities that you might have here would be, say, a police station. This building here, because this is the center of government, City Hall itself. Other areas of counties, you have areas where individuals can go and take shelter. That's why they're called shelters. They're scattered all over. Some of those facilities need to be hardened. Some of those buildings need to be augmented, say, with generators, things of that nature. So they are independent during storms. That's kind of what this is about. Now, there are hardening practices also. Those could be seawalls. Those could be things like storm shutters on these facilities or critical facilities. But it's not just critical facilities that you have to worry about. We also have sensitive facilities. Something you might consider a sensitive facility here in Dunellen would be the Harbor House or the Haven House. You have assisted living facilities. And those individuals need as much help, especially in these times of disaster or something moving forward, especially in a tornadoic event, tropical storm event, and things of that nature. They have to be moved to a safe area. That is part of what we look at. Those shelters have to be in place. They have to be in a good state that can be managed. These programs actually allow for that to happen, or at least assist the community in Marion County to make that happen. What we do here are what this process does, and it's essentially going through those motions. You identify what you need to have done. You are a part of the local mitigation strategy group, and Dunellen has been since 1999 in the inception of the program. It's only updated every five years with a major plan such as this, but it is required. But once you have identified those things, you fill out those applications, you submit them to us, we submit them to the state. And then we go through the process of hopefully getting the money in order to do what we need to do. With those applications, there's also a lot of public outreach, which during the time of COVID was problematic in itself. We weren't allowed to able, or we weren't able to have the meetings that we normally would typically do. So what we did is we set up a series of surveys. One was a stakeholder survey, which would be, had been professional individuals who work directly in this field or have some sort of relation to this field, planning, engineering, things of that nature, medical, that type of thing. And then you put all of this into, this is the currently adopted document, the 2015 plan. The 2020 is what we're moving forward on right now. You put all this into the document, and we're gonna go through the chapters in just a moment. And this is basically what makes it, or us eligible to receive those funds. So next slide, please. This is basically the body of the report or the body of the plan. There are eight different chapters, and then there's one set of appendices. Next slide, please. Executive summary, chapter one is exactly what you think would be. Basically outlines what the report is, why is it necessary, why do we do it, why do we continue to do it? What kind of success have we had from it? I just spoke a little bit about trying to develop your strategies by identifying projects. Your public involvement components, sorely lacking this year. But fortunately, DM is working with us on that, and we've pretty much given the clearance with the way we did our public involvement through the survey process. And ironically enough, we actually had more participants in the survey than we did in past meetings where people actually had to come attend the meetings. As far as the changes with the 2020 update, there have been some changes. Nothing terribly significant, other than a lot of data update, which has to be consistent, you know, from every five years. The big elephant in the room is pandemic. We did add some elements to the plan as far as the pandemic is concerned. One of the major problems that we did put in with, or had in, identified with the language in a pandemic is everything's different. There's no singular way to address any type of pandemic or epidemic that we would see come across the board. So essentially, the language that we have enlisted into the document essentially identifies the fact that pandemics or epidemics are unique by the very fashion of what they are. There are a set of protocols that are established by the federal and state government that we adhere to. And then that comes down to our level, the local level. How do we maintain the protocols they have established, customize them to what we need to do, and then hand them off to, say, Mr. Bowlin, who's been very, very involved with all of the COVID response? So this could be, I hope not, this could be something different five years from now. But I guarantee the response that we would have to take then is not going to be the same as we are taking now, just because things are different. And that's one of the things that we try to identify in the plan, throughout the plan, but specifically in that section. Participating jurisdictions, I gave you those before. There's five municipalities in the Marion County, Dunellen being one of those. Next slide. LMS procedures, we kind of went over that a little bit already. I got ahead of myself. Basically, by that is identifying, some of the projects, we'll get a little bit of that in chapter four, which is initiatives. But procedural portion of it is essentially how it runs. Everything is within Robert's Rules of Order. There are several subcommittees for review, for finance, special conditions. But the main committee is a group that meets quarterly. They meet at the Grist Services Department. They are the ones who rank the projects as they are submitted. There are also basically an outreach to the community. There are communications groups, there are medical groups, there are engineering representatives from municipalities. There are planning representatives, members from the Salvation Army. We've got quite a diverse cross-section that have to deal with these type of situation, type of situations when they do arise in our community, no matter what type of disaster or event it is. Next, please. Development, LMS initiatives, basically these are the priority projects that I was mentioning to you before. The way these work is you submit them. They stay on our board, or they stay on our list after they're scored for a period of five years. If they're not renewed, they drop off of this list. Currently, we have over twenty projects that are on there. The city of Reddick had four that dropped off last year. The city of Bellevue had three that dropped off this year. We haven't had anything on here from Dunellen, not in quite some time. Currently, what you see now are either from Marion County or city of Ocala, with some areas that have been sponsored by the city of Ocala. Now, we do have one private group here that is Satiki Village. And they have applied for emergency generators. And we actually went through a major redo of their application about eight or nine months ago. So it looks like they are scheduled probably to actually receive some funding. Currently, the only three projects that we do have funded right now are actually all city of Ocala projects and all drainage projects. So it's essentially floodwater mitigation. Next slide, please. Working group organization, just briefly touched on this as well. These are the four different subgroups, risk assessment, mitigation, planning, financial, and then also public information. We don't call these groups out very often. In fact, we didn't really call them out during this time, this last update, because of everything that was going on with the pandemic in order to have to try and maintain social distancing. A lot of this was handled over the phone and with staff. Next slide, please. Hazard identification. Now, here is the list. These are typically what you would see in basically most of the programs. There are gonna be some, some varied things. I mean, we're not prone to mudslides. We're not prone to volcanoes or earthquakes, things of that nature. Other parts of the country, those are real concerns for them. But this, these areas are split into four different subsections, whether natural, or five, excuse me, ecological, technological, societal, and health. Some of them play off of one another. You can have technological societal that, you know, combined with, say, a attack that would be based on, say, anthrax, okay? You have two different groups, but they are being combined. Pandemic epidemic. Now, they're in one group, but you also have another concern to that, pandemic epidemic. As we all know, the aging population has been of special concern because of this particular virus. That might not necessarily be true in something else. But once again, you have an aging population that you have to be concerned about because they are a sensitive group when you have a tropical storm event or there are extreme heat events or drought events and things like that. So all of these kind of move together or in some shape or form related to one another, regardless of what area they are in. And most of them are things that we actually have to worry about here. You could have a hazmat-related event on a train, not this rail line, because this is, it's rather unique in its, its origin and its purpose. But a major going through the S-line in town or something like that. Very, there was a derailment two years ago, major derailment, south of city of Ocala, south of Bellevue. Luckily, hazmat was not necessarily a major concern in that particular point. I'm sure there was some fluids and fuels and things like that that had to be accounted for and had to be cleaned up. But I'm talking about, you know, any type of, considering medical waste, could be nuclear, there's no telling. But like I said, these are all of the things that we had to consider when we're putting this together. You have to identify all the potential hazards. Not only do you do that, we have software that's approved by FEMA that we utilize. It's called Hazus. We use another, basically, website. It's a spatial data analyst website that actually looks into a lot of the different things that we have in our area and incorporates those into the Hazus portion, which basically calculates how much we have in Marion County that we need to worry about, not only by the county, but also by a specific community. Next slide, and we can see that. Oops, I'm sorry, one more. All right, this is, the next series of slides, basically I put it here because they are specific to the city of Dunellen. By running Hazus, this is a vulnerability assessment matrix, and we can look at some of the different things that are listed here. You have drought, flood, riverine erosion, tornado, hurricane, wildfire, heat, sinkholes, and severe winter storms. Not a lot of problems with severe winter storms in Florida. Drought realistically is not a problem in Florida. But you have tornadoes, hurricanes, and where Dunellen is located, high potential for wildfire. Matter of fact, all of Marion County has a high potential for wildfire and much of the tropical storm-related issues. Next slide, please. These are also part of that assessment that we had ran. If you look at the top one, this is Dunellen. This identifies how many properties are actually within certain types of flood zones that are within Marion County specifically to the city of Dunellen. There are three-hundred-and-ninety-seven parcels that are in Marion County that are subject to potential flooding in an A or AE zone. Those are actually low-hazard zones as far as a flood identification is concerned. But these are the things that FEMA is interested in knowing. It's been identified specifically for this community. You are not going to have this kind of matrix available for the city of Reddick, where there's no major lakes or rivers that would be available. Next slide, please. And this is actually a map of your area with the different flood zones. The colors didn't come out, out around the river too well, but you can see some hash marks in there. The blue is A, and then the most prominent is AE, which are the different types of flood zones. Like I said, those are typically low, low occurring as far as their magnitude. I'm sorry, we lost the word there. Flooding might occur on a regular basis, but what we're looking at are hundred-year storms, fifty-year storms, things of that nature. So that's what this flood matrix identifies. And next, please. So basically, we've put all of this together in the plan. We've identified what we need to do, who's gonna be there, how they work together, why are they there? How is the county or the municipalities, how are they vulnerable in their own way? How's the county vulnerable in the entire way? Then the last chapter is basically where it all gets put together. These are all the different initiatives and the processes, the protocols essentially, that we would pursue in order to make this plan come to fruition in the event of disaster. However, it's, this is about achieving the funding, acquiring the funding to help make things better, as well as working with other agencies, such as the EOC and any planned protocols that any local municipality might have. But when we incorporate all of this, we have to take into account, like I was talking about, scoring procedures and prioritization. That sets any particular project that is being requested, that sets it up in a hierarchy that is considered for funding. And it's also considered for the different type of funding that is available for it. Flood mitigation funds are not available for hurricane mitigation. They're just two different kinds of, two different pots of money. Comprehensive plans for each municipality have to be considered. Comp plans don't change that often. The LMS does. So the LMS is more of a dynamic document typically than the comprehensive plan is, but they are interrelated. They do matter to one another. This is where you're getting your planners, who are trained to know how to work, or who understand the comp plan, but also are able to work with other agencies who, in their own turn, have their own abilities. That is a major outreach point. That's why the comp plan is important, because when you're doing it, it has to stay, it has to be a legal project, no matter, no matter what. And then basically, this is what everybody wants to know when it comes right down to it, how do we get that money? Basically, you follow all the protocols that are set forth through the application process. It has to be a good project. There is also a cost-benefit analysis that goes into any application that's submitted that we will be more than happy to, to help you with. Understanding the program, this plan is updated, our actions are updated every year. The five-year plan is exactly that. It's updated every five years. Right now, we don't have a representative from the city of Dunellen on our committees. Lonnie's gone, Dawn has retired. That's something that we need to remedy. I know that you are in a dress, and that's something you should consider to having a representative appointed to that as soon as possible. It's just in the benefit. But the last thing, the most important thing, is the adoption of the plan. By adopting the resolution of this plan that makes you allowable to receive those funds, it's part of the LMS collective in Marion County. So you are eligible to receive flood mitigation funds. You are eligible for. Um so you are eligible to receive flood mitigation funds. You are eligible for hurricane mitigation. You're eligible. For building resilient infrastructure, and those are only just a few of the programs, but there are major programs. Uh there are other funding options that are in there. Um but you have to go through this entire process in order to be able to acquire those monies and have those monies distributed here. Uh and I will go ahead and tell you now, it's not really important, but there are some of those programs that do require a match. But typically, it's about a twenty-five percent local match to seventy-five federal or state. Not all the programs do. Um so it's not always completely free money. I mean, there, there are things that have to go hand in hand with it. Um but with good planning and then working with uh Marion County, working with us, working with the EOC. Um you can acquire monies in order to improve areas that you would potentially think you would have problems with. Um one thing, and I'll bring this up just because I'm aware of it, one of the projects that I worked here on extensively was County Road Forty-four, redoing that roadway. Actually redoing the entire footprint of that roadway to add a multi-use path and a bridge. One of the things that really um. Became a stepping stone, not a hurdle. It's just something that we did not anticipate was the age of the infrastructure that was actually under the corridor. Um there's still a lot of clay pipe that was under there. Um that has to be replaced, some of eighty, ninety, a hundred years old. So that added more money to the project. There are elements of funding that are in this bill that you can actually utilize to replace aging infrastructure. Because it will improve the safety of the individuals that are in your community. Uh even if you were trying to build new areas where you're reaching out, say it was to an assisted living facility. Or um a a home or a shelter, things like that, you could extend infrastructure technically through this program. Uh by utilizing some of the different funding programs they have. There's a whole host of different programs that address a whole host of different uh needs. I know I bounced around a little bit there. Um so uh if I confused anybody, please, by all means, uh ask me any questions you have. Um if you have any comments, I'd like to hear those too.
Start on the side, Miss Kenny, you have any?
Well, I appreciate very much you being here. We're all very concerned about these issues. Obviously, we would. I will be uh giving considerable attention to the fact that we need representation. And we look forward to the dialogue. So thank you so very much.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um and the administrative offices have my contact information. Ms Hancher, I've known for quite some time and worked with in the past. Uh they have my contact information. Any questions at any time, by all means, please contact me. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you have about any of the, anything that's related to this.
Vice Mayor.
Hey, thank you. Good, and I'm confusing some of it, but that's okay. I say that way. But question, um especially you kind of just went to one of my questions I had written down. Um as you know, FGUA now owns the water system here in town. So now if I'm making this any. Make sure I'm doing this right, but let me ask, could FGUA be part of this LMS?
They they can, they could be um a sub-applicant.
Okay.
Typically, what has to happen is it needs to come through a municipality. Um it municipalities, uh tribal nations. Um governmental entities essentially, but uh I told you before, you had Satiki Village that was on there.
Right.
Um they're technically, they're a sub-applicant, so yes, you can. Uh because the way that works is even though it's leased to them, or I'm not exactly sure how it works, it's still for a community.
Right.
Um so there might be a few more conditions to it, but technically, it still serves a municipality.
Okay, yeah, because they're a governmental agency in themselves.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's kind of like, maybe that could work and um. And I'm just trying to wrap my head around. The projects I I'm sure Troy and Chief are probably thinking of some things that would um. Benefit them. So like, are you talking? That I understand, like, like the one lady with the roads, the things of that nature.
Roads, roads are a little bit different. Um and roads are handled not through this program.
Okay.
Um roads are actually handled through FEMA, and I don't know if you recall with being. On the TPO, because I don't think it was ever addressed in your tenure, um functional classification of corridors. It's basically, it's a hierarchy of corridors essentially, and it starts um with grade-separated highways and then goes all the way down to local roads. Part of the, part of that functional classification of corridors is for FEMA assistance.
Okay.
Um and there's other things, but that's part of it. Um essentially, what we're looking at with this kind of stuff is. Establishing safe areas um for disaster mitigation. I mean, obviously, what we think about mostly. Is those tornadic storms, tropical storms, things of that nature. So that means set emergency generators. Um shutters um that would go on a shelter. Shoulders that would go or shutters that would go on an emergency operations facility. Um City Hall. Um yes, that would be a viable candidate. Um solar panels um in the event of power loss. Um one of the things that Sergeant or uh Preston Bullen and I just discussed, um I was in the EOC before I came over. Is they are looking at a church and they need to have a coupling system. Essentially, what you have right back out here on the corner of the building, you have a generator back here. Um but there is a coupling system. And basically, the reason they needed, you have it here, but what they would need that for is they don't have to have a generator right there.
Right.
But if they have that coupling that's on the church, they can bring a portable generator to that church and use it for an emergency shelter. One of the things they're concerned about is for special needs individuals. Those type of individuals who cannot be in a regular population. They need to be cared for separately because they have um separate needs. That's the kind of thing um that really gets a lot of attention to Tallahassee also just because of it's unique, but it is important. Often things that people don't think about. There are a whole host of different projects. If you can relate it back to the safety of your community. Um and recovery of your community during our, uh during an event, um then it is very likely to be considered.
So and when would this all be? When would this, when do you need this information?
We are actually asking uh City Council for adoption this evening. Um. Adoption of a resolution that I submitted.
Um so it's too late for us to add any projects in?
No, ma'am, it is not. Um that is a completely different process.
Oh, okay.
I will actually be submitting a call for projects on May first. We haven't, we haven't begun or entered into that phase yet. This is just the plan. Um this is kind of the, the doc, this is the the guiding document on how we do it. This is not actually the process for what you're talking about.
Okay.
For project submission. Um that will be May first. Uh you'll have the most of the summer in order to um prepare those documents and then get those to us. I mentioned we meet quarterly. Um or the LMS committee meets quarterly. So the adoption of scoring of those, probably, pardon me, the scoring of those projects uh will occur. Later in the summer and then the uh prioritization by the LMS committee uh will be in early fall.
Okay.
So you have plenty of time to do that.
Okay, because I'm just thinking of some projects already in my mind. Out of.
And actually, while we're on that, we are, um I will be in Dunellen, or excuse me, I'll be in Bellevue uh in a week and a half. Um Director Bullen and I will both be uh at the City of Ocala and Marion County um at beginning of May. Uh we will be doing the town of Macintosh and the town of Reddick um very soon, but what we are looking for is an adoption of the plan by May fourth. Uh for the Ocalans and um uh Marion County. Uh we are aware of your meeting schedules, and I do apologize for bringing this to you uh kind of quickly. Um but we are asking for an adoption of of the resolution. Um if there are any questions that you have after the fact, I will be more than happy to come back. That that is not an issue at all.
Thank you for coming up here. Also, I wanted to ask you, um are you working with the school board uh concerning their shelters and?
Yes, ma'am, uh directly. Um absolutely, that's, that's, that's a necessity.
Yeah.
Um there are several of the high schools. Actually, we're looking at Forest High School trying to uh acquire our generator for them as well.
How about Dunellen?
Uh Dunellen is, um actually, I wish Director Bullen was still here because he's actually the one who is hands-on with that. Um and they identify which schools are going to be used as shelters based on what's coming through in particular areas. So I do not personally work with them. I do work with Dave Hurley. He was the planner, um planning manager for the uh Marion County. Um but Sergeant, or excuse me, Director Bullen is the individual that can actually give you all the ins and outs of details of. Of how the schools are chosen, why they're selected, uh and you know, when they are called up during events.
I was more interested in, um I think you used the word um. Word you used for uh having the safety facilities.
Hardening?
Yes, hardening.
Yes, ma'am.
Of uh concerns about Dunellen High School as a as shelter, definitely.
Okay, by all means, um then please, uh why don't we schedule a conference call? Um you let me know what your concerns are. Um maybe Vice Mayor Hancher could participate in that. Um and I could probably either get Aaron Miller, who's deputy director. Um of the uh LM, or excuse me, of the EOC or um Director Bullen. So I'm sure that we could, we can discuss that. You could voice his concerns directly or voice your concerns directly. Um but that's something that we could probably uh assist you with in preparing. Uh uh an application, uh if that's something that we identify uh some needs for.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Odom, I have, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Your, your program that's currently in place right now.
It is.
How long has it been in place?
Twenty years, sir.
Twenty years.
Yes, sir. It was initiated, this specific program was initiated in nineteen ninety-nine.
Okay. So in in that twenty years, has Dunellen ever applied for and received funding from your program?
Unfortunately, I've only been a part of that program for about uh two years, but. Jan's gonna bail me out right here.
I am.
And and you know what the next question is? If not, why, right? That would be, that would be my next question. Okay, Jan, I'll leave it.
Still gonna see if she's gonna bail me out here.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I don't recall when, as far as the year. But we applied for a critical facility hardening um grant. And we were awarded a grant. It was basically for hurricane shutters. And there were additional considerations that had to be taken in with. Not only acquiring shutters, but the buildings that were selected had to be hardened. FEMA required that, like.
Struck. They, when you're trying to improve something to that nature, you're, you're trying to raise it to a standard, the rest of the building needs to be to the, it's that standard. Or at least comparable where it can accommodate what you're trying to do to it.
So, so and when we were awarded the grant, we included um for this building, a generator. Um some, I guess, fascia, soft foot and fascia. Um uh I don't want to say repair, but um covering holes where wind can penetrate and blow off the roof. And which we were awarded funding for it. We turned the grant down because um a consensus could not be reached on the style of shutters. So we sent the award back. Um that award also covered the Public Works Building for um garage doors. And I believe as well as shutters and the police department for shutters.
And that was?
I want to say it was around two thousand and nine.
But that was refused also?
Oh, the whole, the whole thing.
Okay, so.
It was, it was one grant that council could not come to a consensus.
So the answer to the question in twenty years. The city of Dunellen applied one time and refused.
I was not on that council.
Jan, I owe you lunch. I didn't think you were gonna do me that well, but you.
Do we have a little?
I remember that.
Do we have a little problem here? Um that is a perfect example, Mr. Odom. We have, we are, we do realize we need to. Get a little bit more sophisticated on our ability to apply for grants. And uh that is part of this council's current program to kind of. Expand our ability to do, to do that. One question for you, Satiki Village. Uh they applied and they received a grant this year.
We haven't gotten a confirmation that they have received it. Um what had happened is we, they were going through the hurricane mitigation grant program. Um they asked us to update their application.
Okay. Is there, is there a limit, a bottom or a top to the amount of money you may receive?
Not really. Um I mean, you're not going to get thirty million dollars to to build a new EOC. Um you're not going to get that kind of money to build, you know, a super hardened relief shelter or something like that. Basically, what these programs are doing is they're looking at smaller improvements. Um some of these generators are quite expensive, depending on what kind of building they're trying to run, two, three million dollars. Um so typically, in that area. Um. Two to three or less, uh I would say, um but just because you get one does not preclude you to get um be eligible for another. Uh if you have a good project. Um and they look at it from a cost benefit ratio, they look at it from the potential of how many individuals is this going to affect? Um that is all part of the equation. Um but in a short answer, no, it is, there is not.
Um so it's applicable to current buildings or is it applicable to new buildings?
All, all. Um as I had mentioned before, with um what Jan had brought up. You, if you're going to harden a building, it has to be structurally able to accommodate the improvements that you're going to make to it. Um so those are things that you need to consider. Um you wouldn't be hardening a historical wood structure that was built in eighteen ninety-five. Uh it's just not realistic.
So I mean, this is a very important question, very important question I'm going to ask you, right?
Yes, sir.
We're, we're in the process of discussing a new police headquarters in a new building. And one of the things that I understand is that building needs to be hardened. For the uses of the police. Would that building and that application be applicable to your?
It is an existing structure, correct?
Correct.
Yes, it would. But typically, and I'm sorry, I missed the the direction you're going.
Yeah.
If it was a new, brand-new structure, no. An existing structure, yes.
You're good.
I got notes on that.
Thank you very much. Okay, this has been a real eye-opener. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me. Um like I said, it's uh, we are requesting uh adoption of the LMS um from Dunellen City Council. Um we will be um utilized or taking all of the resolutions uh to the final adoption uh on May fourth. Uh for Marion County and the city of Ocala.
One last question.
Yes, sir.
Would a. Community center. That is also used as a emergency shelter.
Yes.
If it, if that was hardened, would that be what you would need to have that as a emergency?
If you use it as an emergency shelter, it is a candidate for these firms. It has to be a sufficient style structure, as I said. Um this couldn't be something that's, you know, historical, made out of wood and it's raised. Um but you would, you would need. And honestly, it depends on what you're going to use it for, but if you are looking for that specific type of structure, a tropical storm shelter. Um there would be some problems with that. Um if it was being used right now, I mean, during uh, you know, something that had to do with flood mitigation. Um and it was in that particular area and you're using it to help the community, um then it is eligible. So it, it depends on what context you want the building to function.
Okay, and these are things we'll have to learn as we go, right?
All right, like I said, I, I am always available, so please contact me if you have any questions. Uh you all have uh access to the document, the draft document. It will remain in a draft form for the next few weeks. If you have any questions, you have any comments, you have any recommendations, please, by all means, contact me. Uh we have special exchanges with you. Or are your recommendations or uh anything with you, or if you just have any questions about the plan?
And one question, are you looking for a job?
No, sir, I'm not. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, just Josh, not really. Uh, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Was that his job interview?
Okay.
He knows better.
Very good. Uh now we're going to item number thirteen, resolution number RES twenty twenty-one dash zero eight. Local mitigation strategy plan twenty twenty update. This is to deal with what Mr. Odom asked for council to consider adopting this. Is there, is there any public comment based on what Mr. Odom presented or the motion as it's going to be? Public comment? Hey, no. Public comment? Uh do we have a motion to move this?
So moved.
By title only, correct?
That was, yeah.
You have a second?
Second.
Andy, would you please, and Miss, Miss Roberts, please read it?
Resolution number RES twenty twenty-one.
Resolution number RES 2021-08, a resolution by the City of Dunellen, Florida, adopting Marion County Local Mitigation Strategy Plan 2020 Update, Providing for Repeal and Conflict, Providing an Effective Date.
Okay, do we have a motion to move resolution number RES 2021-08 for approval? Do we have a motion?
Sir, we, we need to go back and vote on the, we didn't vote for title only.
Title only?
We just only had a first and a second motion.
All right, we can do that. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Passed unanimously. That was easy. Okay, let's go to another one. We'll do that. Do we have a motion to move resolution number RES 2021-08 for approval? Do we have a motion?
I moved.
We have a second. Hey, I believe on this one, there can be council comment on this. Is there any council comment on this?
Not for me.
No comment? Please note, there is no comment.
Well, the, the only thing I'd like to say is, if we can't find anybody for the go on the liaison, I wouldn't mind doing it. But that's just FYI. To discuss later.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Please note, this was passed unanimously.
Thank y'all for your hard work.
Okay, now we're going to item number fourteen on the agenda. Resolution number RES 2021-07, Council Code of Conduct Amendment, Public Decorum. To refresh you all, this is a referendum that we're going to describe what, what the public, how the public approaches, and what they say to council, and how they go about saying it. Is there any public comment on this resolution? Yes, Mr. Dunn?
My name's Wally Dunn. I live at 11386 Southwest Hendrix Drive. Upon reading this, my first reaction was, obviously, no one read the entire document here. Because there are a number of things in here that are wrong. I'm not talking about the decorum of the public. I'm talking about things like on page five, where it says, we're gonna have a deadline for the evaluation of the city manager. A whole paragraph on it. We don't have a city manager. That ought to be taken out of this document. This document is wrong. Okay? You keep going over to page six. Says, no member of the council shall actively endorse or campaign another candidate for the city council. That came up in November, and our attorney told us that was against the law. So I think that needs to be removed from this document before it's passed. Then, not being a wordsmith by myself, I went through this document very carefully and read fifteen times where the word "city manager" is in this document. That needs to be removed. We don't have a city manager. So my reaction to this is, we need to take this document, reread it, pull everything out that's wrong before it is approved and passed. That's my comment.
Is there any other public comment on this? Mr. Hand, I think you giving comment to that would be appreciated right now.
Yes, Mayor, I'd be happy to. The, the changes to this document the council directed myself and staff to make are in strike through an underlying form. The rest of the document remains as it has been historically. And at this time, council is addressing just this particular issue. The rest of the issues raised and so forth can be addressed at council's leisure in the past. The city manager reference is, is not an issue, given the city's adoption of the, the new resolution that essentially replaces the language "city manager" with "city clerk." Now, that's in, of course, the ordinances, but logically also apply resolutions. So it is a document that, when council, you know, chooses to make it a priority, or chooses to look at the rest of it when resources allow, can certainly be addressed. There are probably a number of provisions in here that could be improved, that are historical. But nonetheless, that can be taken up at council's leisure. The only thing changing tonight are, are the portions and strike through an underline per council's direction. Should council proceed with adoption?
Well, it's my understanding, although to Mr. Dunn's points, and I think he made some very compelling points. In fact, the points, a couple of the points he made were things that I was concerned about previously. This resolution isn't about that. This resolution is about a specific item. And if those things need to be resolved, they can be resolved on their own when we're ready. So it's not like we're like we're re-agreeing to all this. We're just simply changing this one, one item.
Exactly. And if council recalls, council, I, I think it was perhaps two council meetings ago, maybe it was at the last council meeting, made some changes to a different portion of this document. So it's simply, it appeared to me at least, that you all have attempted or approaching revisions of this document, one issue at a time, as opposed to a comprehensive review.
This is really to Mr. Dunn's point. I think if we went through the entire document, not just the one page that he read, I think if we went through the entire document, there's probably revisions that would need to be made about the entire document. Correct?
I would agree with that, yes.
Right. So, Mr. Dunn, in response, I think you're spot on in what you've identified. I think what you're calling for is, for us to look at the entire document and go line by line, page by page, and clean it up. And what this resolution tonight is not an attempt to do that. But we can, and your, your comments are very well noted. Just wanna say something? Okay.
Well, I would certainly agree with that. I appreciated your comments, and you're absolutely correct. That's what I feel about it.
Yes.
I also would like to say, thank you to Mr. Dunn for bringing that to our attention, because
Hey, do we have any other public comments on number fourteen? If not, we have a proposed motion. I move resolution number RES 2021-07 be read by title only. Do we have a motion?
I moved.
Second?
Second.
A motion by Vice Mayor, second by Ms. Kenny. Do you read it first, and then we vote? We have a vote, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Ms. Roberts, would you please read it by title only?
Resolution number RES 2021-07, Resolution of the City of Dunellen, Amending Resolution Number 2021-05 Regarding the City Council Code of Conduct to Amend Rules of Order Regarding Public Decorum, Providing Perseverability, Conflicts, and an Effective Date.
All right, thank you. Proposed motion. Does someone want to move resolution 2021-07 to be approved? Do we have a motion? Second? Covage? Any council comment before the vote?
Are we still gonna try and have the staff put this up on like a, on the podium? The verbiage, like we talked about at city workshop?
I, I don't know if there really needs to be a official vote on something like that. I think if we just give them a directive to do that.
But that's right, while we're talking about it, while it's still kinda fresh in our minds, because we had said that the public knows what we expect of them, that we should do that.
I'd like to speak to that.
Yes, please.
I, I do think that in regard to public participation, that we are trying to encourage that it is not necessary to have some actual plaque or whatever you want up there. I do think there's updates that need to be done in the codes of public decorum, but I think there are updates that need to be done for council code of conduct. A lot of those things, I think, are reflective of the fact that we are now in a nature, in, in a situation where many of our public participation is via Zoom. And when we have people making comments with, in Zoom, we need to specify that some of those same requirements, such as not degradating a person necessarily, and the other things that we concern, consider to be in good taste, should be considered. So I am hoping that we will be on a future agenda looking at what we are expecting of the council themselves as representatives of the people.
There's just something that we talked about, so that's all I, we can bring it back up.
So let, let's, let's just stay on task. Right now, what we're doing is voting whether or not we want to pass this resolution. And then what we do with it is up with us. Any other up to us? Any additional comment? Hey, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Please note that resolution passes unanimously. Okay. We move to agenda item number fifteen, a request for proposal number RFQ 2021-01 for Architectural Services. Start off with, is there any public comment on agenda item number fifteen? Okay, please note, there is no comment from the public. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Dunn, please come on up.
My name is Wally Dunn. I live at 11386 Southwest Hendrix Drive. Once in my life, I'm gonna agree with David Lancaster on something. He and I happen to go to high school together, and he and I rarely agreed on anything. But his comment about moving the Police Department to the Cole Harbor Church because it is unsafe makes a lot of sense. However, I think that move should be temporary, and should be at very little cost to the city. Maybe not even painting the facility. Just move them to get them out of there. I think the fifty-six thousand dollars you guys are fixing to talk about spending is waste money. I do not believe anyone who watches the news and sees what's going on would have any inkling of an idea that the cost of remodeling that building, which was estimated at eight hundred thousand dollars a year ago, has gone nothing but up since then. The cost of lumber is up three times in the last twelve months. Cost of concrete and other petroleum products are up two times. Cost of gasoline is up an awful lot. So the cost of refurbishing this building is gonna be substantially more than eight hundred thousand dollars. And I don't think any of you need to spend sixty thousand dollars to figure that out. I think we need to come to a decision. Three people in this council were voted on this council because they agreed not to go forward if this money was not well spent. And I think if we go forward now, those members of the council will be voted off in four years. Thank you.
Sir.
That's, that's fair game. Okay, any other public comment? All right. What we need is a motion and a second, and then we can have open council discussion on this. Do we have a motion to accept this item number fifteen?
I moved.
Do we have a?
Accept seconded order for preference presented during the April 7th, 2021 City Council workshop and offer my staff to engage heads of negotiation with our time, our time architecture. Apologies for mispronouncing the name.
Okay, very good. Do we have a second to that? A second does not mean acceptance. What it does, it allows council to discuss. It allows council to vote. So do we have a, a second to this motion?
Second for discussion.
Very good. Please note, Vice Mayor made the motion. Ms. Kenny made the second. Okay, here we go. Council comment. Who would like to speak first?
I would like to speak first.
Okay, Ms. Covage, the floor is yours.
I maintain my position that I will not give my acceptance of spending fifty-some thousand dollars to have an architectural firm assess again the possibility of a police station being set up at City Hall where we presently sit. I believe, I have to hap, happen to agree with Mr. Dunn and many, many other people who have spoken with me recently that the situation being, if we spent a hundred thousand dollars to make improvements at the current police station, it would solve a lot of problems, at least for now. Okay? That situation of which has been addressed, in which there are many, many structure, many, there are many problems with that police station building. However, we were given assessment by Anderson Inspections and on February 1st, 2021, our police chief, Mike McQuaid, asked for this inspection, and we have in front of us a document. How many pages? Seven pages outlining the problems with the current police station. I think some of these problems should have been addressed a long, long time ago. And I'm not gonna go back in time and ask, why weren't they? Let's move forward and start taking care of these problems now, one by one, and have our city works manager take a look at what could be done by his staff without going to outside contractors. And that would be, I think, number one step. Secondly, go ahead and start looking for our local contractors to take a look and give us bids on these problems. Instead of spending, spending eight hundred some thousand dollars to move the police station to Souls Harbor Church at this time. Okay, and again, I, I wanna accentuate that this is not a Band-Aid cure for the police station. I'm talking about a wholesale makeover of the problems that exist there to delay spending over a million dollars on moving to Souls Harbor Church. And it doesn't mean that five, six, seven, that years down the road, we couldn't move over there. But right now, as it stands, the city is not prepared financially to make that move. End of comments.
Hey, Ms. Kenny?
I think you expressed it very well. In terms of the situation that we have in the city, we are fiscally strapped. We have made decisions in the past. We have made them quickly, and we have regretted them later. We haven't had wonderful visions of green light communication, et cetera. It's the fact that we are limited in what we have, and we cannot afford, if we're going to keep a charter, we cannot afford to make another mistake like we now have. And I think that the future is something down the road, which, which may change the disposition of what we'll be able to afford to do. But at this time, there has been an election. The election, when we talked to, to various people, we discussed this problem. And I think that when you campaign on a position, and then you are elected, then it is important in terms of public trust to be consistent. It, it isn't that we wouldn't like to do things. It isn't that we wouldn't like to do things, but as elected officials, we are here to represent the people who voted for us. And I think it is unreasonable to think that we can afford a million dollars right now to do anything. But that does not mean that we do not care. It doesn't mean that we don't want to take care of the police that we have. We want people to be safe, but money is, is our future. And, and some of the things that we did, in fact, campaigned on was in reflection a result of the people that we talked to. I think one of the brightest things about our future is that we're having more people participate. That we're having groups of people who are discussing what is happening at City Hall. We have people who are not with us now, but who are listening on Zoom, and they are participating. And these people are, are our future. And I am, I am definitely sorry that we don't have more money. But I definitely feel that there is a brighter day because there are more people that are interested in what's happening in our government. Should we want to go further in terms of satisfying people who I think, for some reason or another, we don't care? A survey is not impossible in terms of getting public opinion. But my responsibility is to represent the people who voted for me. It is my responsibility to be true to those things that I said that I would do. And one of my greatest concerns was to keep our charter, to have fiscal, fiscal accountability, and to see that we had a bright future as we go as we continue on. So I think that your ingestions are reasonable, well thought out, and they're consistent with some of the things that we have advocated in terms of the will of the people.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Vice Mayor, Florishers.
That was a lovely campaign speech. Just to let everybody know, we sit up here as a city council to represent not only those that vote for us, but those that don't vote and those that do support us. I just want to make sure I make that a very clear statement. And this is never a campaigning situation up here, so let's make sure that's a clear statement. As far as our police department, Jan, did we not have these funds already in place for this project during our budget? But these are not funds that we have not already set aside for this, correct?
Correct. We have capital funds. Funds specifically set aside for the police building have not been clearly identified. We do have reserves to fund this project, including, of course, what it comes in.
The whole project or the engineering project?
The architect is in this current budget.
And, and let me just kind of make sure I'm understanding something. And Troy, because you're more of a construction background, and to be honest, I am as well. If we go to renovate a building, will we not have to have an engineer come in and give us those types of engineering specs and such for a, a large remodel?
Given the age of the building, I do believe we're going to have to have some professional advice and guidance before we get in there and just do a haphazard makeover. For example, I was in there last month, replaced a couple of the long eight-foot lights in their main meeting area and realized that all the wiring and the ceiling of that building is cloth wrapped wiring. So it's aluminum cloth wrapped wiring. That doesn't mean the entire building is. I know there was additions done. Some of it may have a more modern wiring to it, but that alone, that's, you know, not something we can just remodel over. So there is going to be some expense and advice.
And our codes require us to have a professional electrician come in there and do that type of work, plus any professional plumbing work and those types of things because of our codes and regulations.
I am real sure of that because if it's just a repair, changing a light switch or a light fixture, that is something we can handle ourselves. But when you rewire a commercial building, I'm sure there are safety guidelines and licensing that has to go along with that.
Yes, because it's the city does not mean that we get to go around any of our rules and regulations.
I would assume so, yes.
And with, because I've heard the citizens, and, and they are duly should be concerned that, and it's always been that in public works, that public works is undermanned and understaffed, and y'all are doing the best you can to do everything you can right now, right? And so now we're going to go have y'all do a major renovation on top of all that?
I'm sure we can participate in some of the renovations. But to do the entire renovation of any building would be a burden on our, on our staff at Public Works. There's no way we could do it. I mean, we can hit one room at a time with painting like we do here at City Hall or, or some minor repairs, but a major overhaul would have to be contracted out for the majority part.
Okay, that's, that's kind of what I was thinking. So and, and you know, and I, and I get it. I, you know, you three, God bless you all. You know, you're, you're trying to do what you think, but sometimes when you when you come upon a position and you think you know how it all works and how it all runs, and then when you have to actually be the one doing the work, knowing the inside outs of a situation, there are times when you don't have to give up what you said to someone, but you have to now go, I am now educated more than I was before. I now understand that there are issues that I probably didn't fully understand when I said those statements. So to say that you said this when I ran for office and that's by golly, by gosh, the only way I'm going to do something is not open minded. It is not fair to all citizens that participate and live within this city. It is not fair to the employees that we have said just last Wednesday, you yourself said the safety and the importance of our, our employees is top priority. I understand that there is a lot of money that is to be spent. And I understand wanting to go to our citizens and ask, okay, guys, here's a survey. Will you please fill this out? Can tell you from, and Mr. Mayor, you've been on this council and we've had surveys done. How many responses did we get back from a citywide survey? What was it, Mandy? Remember when we did that survey? It was probably, we maybe got a handful of responses? It's, it's, it's not. And, and I too, I am so happy that citizens are taking an interest in what's going on in their town and, and in their surroundings. It does. It's, it's what's supposed to happen. It's what I have taught my daughter, and it's what I was taught. So I've, so, you know, for somebody to think that I don't want that, that's, you know, just because you have a different view or an opinion of mine, that's not it, because we're all supposed to have different views and different opinions. But this is something that is not just because this is more important than anything we've done. And to put, excuse my thing is put lipstick on a pig, well, that is about the most that just doesn't logically, that goes against everything y'all wanting to be physically responsible, to do what's best for the citizens of Danellin, to look forward thinking and not go 50 years back into our future. You're, you're saying the total opposite of what you say you want by not going forward with this step in progress. We purchased a building that we have a good price. We've got it at a good price. We made sure what we were getting before we did it, things that needed to be fixed, we did. I just heard Mr. Odom come in here and state that we have funding where we can do some mitigation, lack of better words. First thing I thought of was the Danellin Police Department. Boom, new windows. Boom, there's our hardening. When we have tornadoes coming, and you don't usually get a lot of time, so it's not like hurricanes, but we could get those people and probably those empty break rooms are solid enough that they would be safe. We want a community building. We want to have it where their people are safe. I cannot imagine how you cannot want this for your citizens that you want to protect, that you want to make sure that there's a future for them, that we want to make sure that we don't have snakes coming out of the walls of our police department. We don't need serpents amongst us. That's kind of a common thing. I am just saying that this will protect our citizens. This is what we are here for, is to protect our citizens. And this is what this will start us doing. And Chief has already been, I've told Chief from the get-go, you might want a lot of stuff, but that's not what you're always going to get. Because we will streamline things, but we will do them smart. And we will do it if we know we can't do this today, but let's make sure that the, the wiring is there for tomorrow, that we can get whatever it is that he wants done. So again, ladies and gentlemen, you want protection for your citizens, you want to be physically responsible to your citizens. You want to make sure that there is a structure there that is safe for our employees because they have set a priority. Then I cannot see how anyone could not want to go forward with this project. Thank you very much.
Okay, everyone has had an opportunity to speak once. If anyone would like to speak a second time, I will recognize that, but please, if we go around the second time, let's make our comments as short as we can and get to the point. Anyone else that would like to speak? Once one person says, yes, I'd like to speak a second time, that means everybody else on the council will be offered the same opportunity.
First of all, I think the comments I made just 10 minutes ago have been more than slightly misconstrued. My point was that this is a very good place to start. Okay, and I did not state that Troy and his people should go in and start making repairs at the current police station. I said because of Troy's background and knowledge, he could be of great assistance to make an assessment. And then we could, he could, because he does business with subcontractors that work with Danellin quite frequently. He could talk to subcontractors and let's get some estimates on what it would cost to make that current police station a great place to work. And I don't think it's going to cost $850,000 or a million. I think probably ballpark, we could take that $58,000, we're going to throw out to an architect for their estimate and add another $58,000, and you would have a really nice police station to work at for at least the next several years until we can move on and do something with that Souls Harbor Church. Also, I'd like to make a comment about Valerie making a disrespectful comment to our fellow, fellow council person.
Be careful.
I'm being very careful.
Very closely to what you're saying. Okay.
Okay, when she stated Louise was making a campaign speech, I think that was out of order. I thought, I thought it was disrespectful. Okay, and I won't say any more than that.
Okay, fair enough. Ms. Kenny, what would you like to have?
Yes. In terms of what we would like and what we can afford and how we can preserve our charter, those are the considerations that I think are the most important. Bad, poor decisions could lead us to a point where we actually will have difficulty doing the things that we need in terms of beautification, in terms of code enforcement, in terms of additional salaries for staff, which we definitely need, I agree, a new community development director. These are not issues that have been idly thrown out. 6,500 square foot building hardened for a police station, I think is not in what we can possibly conceive of as the necessarily best use of what the public has been asking for. They've been asking for us to clean up our roads, our streets. They've been asking for us to do some code enforcement so that they're not ashamed of the city that they live in. They've been asking for additional staff for Public Works because it is very understaffed as it is. Waiting a few years until we're at a better fiscal decision or position, I think, is rational. And I do think that eventually we'll be able to, to do whatever we think is, is, is appropriate. But right now, I don't think we have the monies to do anything other than take care of the situation at hand. And the situation at hand appears to be dire. We hear about it on the news. We've seen it on TV. We've gotten very negative press. And, and I think it is with the utmost respect and the greatest concern that we do what we can afford to do first. And we will grow into something more expansive when we can then afford it. But at risk.
Thank you. Good. Thank you very much. Vice Mayor, go again.
Hey, if I offended you, Ms. Louise, I do apologize, but it seemed like a campaign.
It was not.
Well, I, I just said what it seemed to me. So I'm just, if it offended you, my apologies. And as far as misconstruing your comments, you never once said anything about Troy going in and trying to give an estimate of anything and, and his thing. So that's and you said he had the staff and maybe his staff and the two other guys. So that's how I got that out of your words. So again, I'm going to make it real simple. It has always been a planned stepping stone to go into the building. And the total cost, and Chief, I'm just going to ask you real quick, the total cost with the purchase, if we gave you everything you want, and when you presented this, when you presented the new police department to us, which, by the way, I know we're all very big on beautification. I can't imagine this not being part of that kickoff to the beautification that the citizens are asking us to do. I mean, we have volunteers apparently that will help do the landscaping. So that's, I mean, this just seems like it's a golden thing that, again, it's hitting all y'all's buttons. I'm not quite sure why this isn't clicking in yet. But Chief, how much was the whole project when we started with the purchase to the end that you presented to us at that time? And thank you.
I guess I'm a little confused. Oh, I thought I was going to vote to see if we could get an architect to tell us how much it's going to cost. We're throwing $800,000 out. We're throwing millions out. We don't know how much it's going to cost. We have to get an architect in there to tell us how much it's going to cost. I don't know how much it's going to cost. When we first started the building, the city council did the same thing. They asked how much is it going to cost? We get, we threw out an estimate. I am not an architect. I am not a contractor. All that we have asked for, and all we're asking for now, is to hire an architect. And we don't know how much the architect is going to cost. I do think on the agenda for the night, we're supposed to set out a bid. How much are you going to charge us? I don't know how much the architect is going to cost because we just want to go forward. Ask the architect, how much are you going to charge us to come up with these plans? That's my understanding. I don't know how much it's going to cost. I have asked and asked. I have asked and asked and asked for an architect to give us a true value of how much it's going to cost. I thought that's what we were going to do tonight was to make a bid or ask the architect that we approved last Friday to see if they would give us how much they would charge us to do it. Is it 15,000, 20,000? I don't know until we ask them.
Okay, let's, let me make a couple of comments and then we'll vote. Chief, I think you wrapped it up. I think you hit the point. What this is, what this motion is, is to contact this architect. Arton? And ask them give us a cost of what it would take for you to cross the plans. This isn't an approval to go forward with the church building. It's just the process of trying to get what this thing is going to cost. Backtrack a little bit. When this was first brought up at least a year ago, the church building was presented to the council for sale for 325,000 along with 60 parking spaces that went with it, which that made my ears perk up. 60 parking spaces and a building. I thought at that time, I says, this is a very good buy and the city long-term can do something with this. Along with that was, well, we're going to earmark this building for a police station. Okay. At that time, when it was just in its infancy, there was numbers that we could retrofit it for possibly an additional 200,000 or 250,000. So as my mind is a councilman, I says, okay, building, 60 parking spots, right into historic section, 325, another 2250 to retrofit it for somewhere between 500 and 600,000. We got this nut solved. Well, then I was, I was pro. Then when the numbers start coming in on estimates, and this is where I struggled because I never felt confident in the estimates, they weren't professionally done. The estimates came in and suddenly the number, it's all documented, it's public information, it's there. At the estimate now for the retrofit, including parking on one side of the building, not on both, on the police side of the building, was going to be $850,000. So now we're buying the building for 325,000. And the numbers that were shown to the council was it was going to cost up to 850 for the retrofit. The vote came up and I changed. I says, no. So it was passed four to one with me as a councilman being the singular no vote because of the 850 in the purchase price, I thought. Now, one thing I would like to get straight, it was discussed at that time, how are we going to finance this? And Jan was very clear, who said, we do have that much cash. That's not earmarked, but it's basically our rainy day emergency fund. And she strongly suggested, although we can do it, if we use this fund, we will basically, I think it was somewhere around a million dollars, Jan?
Actually, 1.8 million.
Okay, but at the time, you recommended, you would, you recommended that you would not recommend we go to that fund and take money out of it. It's all public record, it's all public record.
Using all the funds that we use a combination
Right.
sources to get the job done.
And you were asked, you were asked by me, how long do you think this will take? Getting the funds through grants and us putting our money in. It's all public record, you said three to five years.
Take that long.
All right. All right. So at that point is when I said, we're not in a position to do this. We can't take money out of our rainy day fund. And the grant money, we were right in the middle of COVID at the time, I didn't even know what the grant money would be available. So here, here we are right now with, with the building, with the lot of options to go. So Teresa, if I could ask you a question? I am aware of the 40% rule. 40% rule, as I understand it, basically says if you improve a property by 40%, then the entire property has to be up to code.
That is correct.
And it's correct.
Substantial improvement. General and yes, it would be brought up.
So that would mean this church. So the church building would certainly be improved by 40%, so the entire building would have to be from top to bottom, everything would have to be up to code. Okay, so that's the consideration. There's no cutting corners on this. It means everything has to be up to code. So here, here's, here's where I'm at. I'm actually where I was when I was a councilman. I'm intrigued by this concept. But as a councilman and now as the mayor, I still do not know what this would cost to do this. I thought the previous council erred in not buying this property on a contingent that we will buy it contingent on giving us the time to get a true estimate of cost before we commit. I'm sure we could have pulled that off with a little negotiation, but we did, we went and bought it. And now we're trying to figure out what it's going to cost after the fact. And we know construction is skyrocketing. So the question I would have for anybody who knows about these things, and this is not my expertise, we have budgeted up to $56,000 for an architectural study. Purpose of that at this point is to give us an idea how we can figure out how much this would cost. I want to know how much it would cost. But is there a way to get that estimate without hiring an architect and paying up to $56,000 to do that? For instance, if I go into Fagan Construction and I say, I want to build a 4,000 square foot home, I want a lot of bells and whistles to it, I want the upgraded cabinets, I want this and that. They can't give me an exact figure, but they can sit down and say, it's going to cost you between X and X. And right then, I kind of know, can I go forward or is this a pipe dream or let's go forward or let's cut back? So I think the troublesome thing for me on this is I want to know, we've gone so far, I want to know what this would cost. So the troublesome thing for me is do we really have to hire a top flight arc and pay that kind of money in order to get a fair assessment of a ballpark figure? I'm looking at, give me a ballpark figure within $100,000. Is it 700,000 to 800? Is it 500 to 600? Is it a million, up to a million one or whatever? Give us a ballpark figure. So I think what's going to be the bitter pill to swallow is this resolution will do nothing other than contact an architect and say, what can you do this for? There's no commitment. No commitment. They come back and say, this is what we can do it for. Then council can decide at point whether to want to go forward. This is not a, like Chief pointed out, this is not a motion at this point to go forward. This is to get an idea of what the cost of the architect would be. And then council then can decide what we want to do afterwards. So am I for the police station? Yes, I think we need a new or at least an improved police station. Am I for this concept regardless of cost? Absolutely not. No. If we can't afford it and if the cost is beyond what the city can do, you just can't do it. We can, I would like to have an Olympic-sized swimming pool in my backyard, but you know, sometimes you can't do those sort of things. So council, this is what this is, this is just a vote whether or not we want to allow the city to get a bid on an architectural design with no commitment to do anything other than that.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
My question is, would hiring an architectural firm give us what we really need to know at that bill, about that building? In other words, I understand that there can be structural engineering that needs to be worked, possibly a problem with the roof. There's no entrance way, no atrium, so we're talking about something more perhaps than architectural plans. Wouldn't hiring an engineer, a structural engineer and taking a look at it? And you mentioned a construction firm because they are structural engineers and certified by the state. So my question is, can we hire both or contact both? An architectural firm plus someone who's in the construction business and get two viewpoints on this?
I think your, I think your point is a good, is a good one in that, let's say you brought in a construction company that dealt with municipal projects and they're out there. And they came in there and you went over conceptually with them what you wanted to do. They came back and said, I couldn't touch this for less than a million five. You wouldn't need to hire an architectural firm.
That's what I'm thinking.
To find that out. So I, I think there's a curiosity by everyone on this council that what is this project going to cost? And if it is something that's doable, maybe we can do it. So I think this discussion here tonight is how do we ascertain the cost that we need? Is it to hire an architect or is there another, is there a better way to ascertain the costs without hiring an architect? The additional comment?
I don't know if a bid process would a possibility in terms of bound to the question, but it seems like we're going in the right direction, I think.
So we do have a motion on the floor with a person, second, please be advised that we have a four-member council right here. And a tie does not carry a motion. The rest comment? Yes.
Just to let you know, a a contractor is not going to come over to a building of this magnitude without an engineering report. It just doesn't happen. Your statement about if I go to Fagan, who I love by the way, they have already had an engineer draw those plans that you have looked at. They already know what's going to go on. So that's why they can get, tell you you had the grant and it's going to cost you this, if you don't do that, it's going to cost you that. So a good analogy, but I just wanted to let you know, it takes an engineering plan to do those things. And I'll just let you know that if we want and we're going to still have to have an engineer go to any building that we want to retrofit in the city. So we will be going to a bid and trust me, they are busy right now. They are not, you know, they're going to, we don't need to pussyfoot around on all this. Regardless of what the council wants to do, with which direction the council wants to go, the engineer will have to be hired regardless of what we do. Want to make sure everybody's kind of.
So when you say engineer, are you also meaning that it's the same as an architect?
An architect, sorry, architect, engineer, yes, yes. Because it's an, yes, it's an architect, they have the engineers in the architect. They have to have engineers draw up and approve the plans. It happens all the time.
So that would explain why it's so expensive because you're.
It's not just somebody coming in here and saying, we're going to paint the walls purple and.
I understand that. Yes, it's more than just drawing, drawing, it's checking it out. Okay, I think we have discussed this council and it's, we do have other items to go in, it is eight o'clock. We do have a motion on the floor, we have discussed this thoroughly, we've had public comment. Time to make a vote, just to repeat what this vote is, is just to simply contact Arton Architecture and ask them what they would charge to take a look at this and write up, write up a plan. It's all it is, so we know, so we know where we're at. So here it is, the motion, accept staff's recommended order of preference as presented during the April 7th, 2021 City Council Workshop, and authorize staff to engage in a competitive negotiation with Arton Architecture. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
It is a two-two vote and based on my understanding of parliamentary procedure to vote does not carry the motion, is that correct, Mr. Hand?
That's correct, that rejects the RFQ process. And so if, there'll be options for you deciding what you want to do, if you want to contact an engineer and so forth, depending how you want to proceed, but this RFQ process is now terminated.
Okay. We go to item number 16, change orders for parking projects, Ernie Mills and Short Tower Way. Is there any public comment on item number 16? Please note, Ms. Roberts, no public comment. And I believe this is your, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two change orders that came in on our parking lot projects. First one is for Short Tower Way. The project budget was 210,000, the contract came in at 134,000. Right now, we have a $7,000, $7,392 change order. The change order was a result of there was a credit given back to us for not having to remove some of the sidewalk along Pennsylvania Avenue. There was three driveway aprons that were asphalted or protected as a result of the project that increased at about three, four, almost 5,000. We had a storm drain over there that was found out to be homemade, which needed to be pulled and replaced with a DOT-approved storm drain box and pipe. That was an additional 1,500. And then because the elevation originally with the road, we didn't realize we were going to need the parking curbs. However, after all, the limark, rock was brought in, elevation was met and the asphalt was in, we realized it was too easy to drive off into the yards and ditches or into the DRA. So we added 33 parking blocks there for 1811. That total change order was 7,392 and 4 cents. I'm asking council to please approve that change order. Over to Ernie Mills Parking Project. This one is a bit more complicated and has presented itself as quite the challenge to get through this project. We had budgeted originally $393,000, $393,750, leaving us a contingency of about 18,000. Our first change order has come in at $11,120. Ernie Mills Parking has presented many challenges as a result of building on an old site that's already been constructed on several times in the past. But some of the biggest challenges we've had was the elevation for the pickleball court portion of the project did not line up with pre-existing road leading to the apartments or behind the businesses there. We could not meet that elevation or proper pitch for drainage with asphalt. So we had to put a concrete apron in and redo some of the sidewalk that was removed previously. That was $3,459. That was three thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars. We had two dumpster pads on that site that were not called out in the requirements of construction. We will no longer be keeping a public dumpster at that location as a result of putting one larger dumpster on the Ernie Mills side itself, reducing costs. So that was an eight hundred dollar increase to remove the old dumpster pads. Over on the Ernie Mills side itself, this is between our workshop and the Ernie Mills Park. The DRA that uh, previously exists did not have uh, any concrete flumes that stops the, the uh, gushing of the water and the erosion factor in there. In fact, it was just old broken concrete or boulders or whatever was found around to slow the uh, the rip. So we had to put in uh, two or they will be putting in two flumes, one at each end of the DRA, taking in all the extra water. We had uh, removal and disposal of unforeseen concrete pads and footers. I wish they would have really spelled that one out for us because there was chunks of concrete, busted concrete. Almost like the side yard had been used for a disposal site for when they pulled up old sidewalks or concrete slabs. So uh, that cost us an extra two thousand dollars just in the hauling of that debris and material. And then the um, excavation and removal of existing sanitary sewer line, sewer pipe and uh, for the maintenance building, installing, connecting the backflow, um, I'm sorry, backfill and new gravity san- uh, sanitary sewer line. The sewer lateral coming out of our building was old galvanized or uh, an old metal pipe. Probably about thirty feet out from the building, it was tied into a newer modern PVC pipe, but not the same quality that they use nowadays. When they pulled up a piece of the old concrete pad and footer that was in that general area, it also ripped up the sewer line because the office sewer line was tied into pre-existing footer and then out to the street. So unforeseeable. That's set us back two thousand two hundred dollars. Right? In addition to that, they have found much more debris, disposal debris and stuff where they finally came to a conclusion and said, rather than trying to clean up the soil good enough to run the mixers through, they have changed the technique from a mix of play and lime rock to doing full rock compaction for ten inches in depth, which eliminates any probability of ripping up machinery or digging up more debris. It has been approved by the engineer. Uh, so currently, our Ernie Mills project has a change order of eleven thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. We will be seeing additional change orders come in for that portion of the project. Some will show a um, rather large amount of credit, whereas the money will be redirected to meet some of the other more important demands or oversights of the project. For example, the, the red brick portion that we were going to do, the decorative red brick in the parking area. We have found a uh, equivalent material that required a lot less uh, excavation and underfill and cheaper material as far as the cost of the material, not the quality, but and the cost of it. So we'll be seeing a credit on the amounts spending for the bricks. Whereas all the chain link fence and the white picket fence that we tried to um, recycle, reuse, we found out was residential grade and completely deteriorated just below the surface of all the concrete, uh, where the concrete and the residential post came together. So we'll see a little increase in the cost of the chain link fencing and the two board fencing, but we'll see quite a decrease in the cost of the red brick. So we're hoping that things will start to balance out. What I would like council to consider one while approving this is that this portion of the project is funded through CRA. Shore Tower was funded through the gas tax. We had approximately ninety-something thousand dollars, I think ninety-six thousand dollars in contingency between the two projects. So if in the event that Ernie Mills goes slightly over the remaining six thousand nine hundred dollars, we have a couple, council has a couple of options, either increase the amount of CRA available to the project, or you can roll over the tax do, the um, road tax from the remainder from Shore Tower into the Ernie Mill project. So we are still within budget. Even though one came in considerably cheaper than expected, the other one's costing considerably more. But it will look like Ernie Mills has gone outside of budget because of the fact that it's funded by the CRA. Just want council to understand that. And if you have any questions, please ask.
I have a question for Jan. Actually, there's a couple of things going on right here. One is the proposed motion and then so Troy is throwing in there, changing how fund this. So is there any way we can include that in the motion so we can take care of both of these issues at one time?
Well, I'm not an expert on motions, but the amount to increase, if you need to increase the amount of the project, it would require a budget. So your motion could be, and Andrew, I might need some help with this. Your motion could be something to the effect, if the projects, if one or, one or both projects come in greater than budget, budget amendments will be prepared and funding source identified at that time. Because um, let's just say Short Tire Way comes in more, we would bring in more gas tax. If Ernie Mills comes in more, you have two options. You can still use CRA funds that would be available, or you can move gas tax.
Well, I guess the question would be, if we just pass, pass the motion as it's currently written, then at a later time, we could readjust where the money is coming from.
Absolutely.
Okay. So let's go that way before we make this into gobbledygook.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
Troy answered a lot of my questions.
So basically for the audience to know that this project is still under budget. And these are some of the changes that have increased the cost, but we are still under budget. Is that statement correct, Troy?
Yes, sir. We are still within budget on the project. Yes, sir.
All right. We have a proposed motion right here. Move on. Let me read it. Authorized mayor to execute paved right change order number one, Ernie Mills in the amount of eleven thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. And number two, short wa, Tower Way in the amount of seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars and four cents. Do we have a motion? We have a second.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Roberts, please take note that was passed unanimously. We go to item number seventeen, US forty-one mid-block pedestrian crossing concept and alternative. Okay, Troy, here you, here you go again. You got.
All right. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I promise to keep this very short and sweet. Couple of weeks ago, I had a uh, conference call with FDOT, the Marion County Roads and Streets and um, engineers and so forth about our crosswalk out here on forty-one, just down the hill by the entrance to the boat ramp. For the last couple of years, it's been quite the challenge, this crosswalk has. And they've even come in this year and did a temporary upgrade of the warning lights to, to pre-warn vehicles coming up there and we're still having issues with it. But they had a long-term goal of putting up a mast arm signal system, just like a traffic light, more or less. Okay? So right now that's set on a five-year expectation of completion. However, this last meeting, they came back with a alternative option that could reduce the cost of this project and expedite it potentially within two years. And the uh, changes to the project are to relocate the crosswalk, use one of three options for their um, mast arm systems. And I think we have uh, backup files for that, Mandy?
Yeah.
Okay, Mandy's going to try to pull them up. So while she's looking that up, all right, yeah, here we go. Let's see, which concept is, is this, okay, this is concept. I can't shine my light on that TV. It don't work. All right. So over on, on here, this is concept B. You notice that they are changing the location of the crosswalk to almost beside our gazebo. Rather than down here, actually right here, where it's pre-existing, okay? In concept A, if this remained here, it would actually be moved over. Their mast arm system would require the city to give them easement or right-of-way access. And it would interfere, could potentially interfere with the location of our welcome sign. But it also puts the crosswalk right in the middle of the turning action, the turn lane action. So from last year till now, we've had several meetings back with Dawn, myself, I think Chief's been in a few of them, where we just wanted them to look at all the options. They came out here on site. That was the second option. Option B does not require any additional right-of-way access or easement granted by the city. Uh, because their easement already exists. It's kind of a taper. See how narrow it is here and how wide it is over here. There's uh, plenty of room for their control box and for their lighting system when they put it in. Okay, this is concept A. You'll see how they've developed the turn lane, how the crosswalk goes between, right inside the turn lane there. And it would require an easement addition right here. This, this red dotted line would be required easement addition. Okay. Uh, Mandy, I think there was an uh, attachment for a video for concept B. And if we can't get it to play, I can describe it to you. Um, okay, do the, yes, do the uh, earth image. There it is. This type of arm system right here is what we concluded our conversation with the other day. Option one was to have this type of a pole on the one side of the street, the city hall side, with one extension arm reaching over five lanes. The engineers, myself, uh, Marion County questioned DOT, is that even possible? And they said, yes, because it's right at the maximum limit. Well, I don't know about you, but I don't recommend stretching anything out to the max, not after the windstorm we had this weekend. Okay? So uh, I had brought this idea up and they said, yes, they are using them. Yes, they are uh, just as feasible. Their control box can still be over here in the right-of-way, the mass arm go, or the uh, main support arm goes in the middle. And you have your lighting. Now, there are also three different types of lighting, and I think we've all concluded to the agreement on the lighting. We have just the yellow flashers. Then you have a red and yellow flasher. But then you have the option, it's exactly like a traffic light, that there's no confusion. When it's green, traffic goes. When it's red, you're required to stop. And it is activated as a crosswalk. Now, one thing I did ask them to consider is not using a galvanized pole, but turning it, painting it brown. They said, well, that might require the city to chip in and enter into an interlocal agreement on the color of the paint. Another lady, uh, one of the engineers spoke up and says, it takes more time and energy to do the interlocal agreement than it would be if we just paint the pole. So the other thing I had talked to them about was potentially taking into consideration if they do any work in the asphalt itself, was either doing the stamped brick or red brick look. That would require cities' uh, financial contribution and an interlocal agreement. Uh, and then they informed me that no matter how pretty you make that crosswalk, it's still going to have those big white stripes painted right down through it. So I will leave that option out until forty-one gets repaved in the future. Okay? So right now we're looking at no expense to the city, other than an increase to our already pre-existing Duke Energy contract for an extra street light to give more lighting in that area and an extra traffic light to put on to the county's uh, contract for maintaining traffic lights. Any questions about those concepts and?
Council, any comments, questions?
Question. So would it have the three black boxes or would there just be one black box?
Hanging down right here?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, there'll be a light for each lane. Yeah. So we'll actually only have two lights because we only have two lanes. And the turn lane will actually be like a median in that area, you know?
And excuse me, and so, and it would be activated the same as it is now if somebody.
Activated the same way.
Fishing it?
Yes.
And this way we're not, because in Plan A, did it look like they were taking the turn lane out?
No, and in, yeah, in concept A.
Where that yellow is right there is that.
What they're actually doing is adding, they're changing the, the way the uh, turn lane is currently. You'll see where the crosswalk currently is. They were going to move it down close to our welcome sign so that they can create a longer turn lane ability for them to come into Blue Gator. You see how that lines up better as opposed to getting past the concrete median, slamming on your brakes and then trying to turn into Blue Gator?
And in all honesty, I think I spoke to you about this too, and when we had our meeting with TPO as well with Rob, it makes more sense to put it down closer to our gazebo because when you're coming down, come off the bridge. You're coming, you know, coming across the river and then all of a sudden you're like, whoa, I gotta stop now versus at least you're going to see, you have more of a visual sight to see if it's turning red and why it needs to. So I think that's a better option personally.
That, the visibility to pedestrians is, is greater up here at the gazebo as well.
And when we have our boats turning into our parking area or boat ramp, you know, right there is where they're trying to get people to cross. And we have boats jammed up back there sometimes. So it just common sense. Those gazebo.
Little less congested up by the gazebo. I agree. I agree.
Other comments? One simple question I have for Troy.
Yes.
If everything went well, you know, was, how long would it be before this?
Estimated two years to completion.
It's pretty much the standard answer to.
I was going to say that two years could stretch out to a three-year, depending on the project cost or the priorities statewide. But they did say A would take a minimum five years, two can be done probably as quick as two years. So I wouldn't hold them to.
Thing about it is uh, the widening of forty-one back toward forty. Clear window is kind of what I'm hearing about that. So maybe, maybe within that period of time, they're planning to.
Two, two to four, right, right, the four year.
Okay.
Now, the only thing I'm going to ask of council is if you have any comments or concerns about this, please let me know tonight. Which I don't, I mean, DOT is going to do what they want to do. I just want to make sure that we're all okay with getting it moved up by our gazebo.
My only comment on the preference of the lighting is I, I think when you press that button, it should stop or go.
Yes.
It shouldn't be flashing.
No, it will go green, yellow, red.
Totally stop and totally go.
I believe that's the one they're going to use. Okay, I will call them in the morning and let them know that I reviewed this with you and we have no additional comments or concerns for.
Very good. All right. Everybody, we're at item number eighteen, in my opinion. This particular item possibly is the most important thing that we're talking about this entire evening. Idea of trying to find a element manager. This, we have since Troy's resignation three months ago. If you notice about eight o'clock, I start miss, you know, missing a word here and there.
I'm with you.
I pick on him enough.
This has been a vaccine problem and I think as Teresa eloquently stated at the beginning. This is a critical a lot of things ongoing, things of major consequence like the solar farm. Right now, that solar farm needs some sort of planner to iron out all the different wrinkles that are current. Right now, that solar farm needs some sort of planner to iron out all the different wrinkles that are currently going on with that. As solar farm is partially in the city. We have to address that, otherwise that entire project is being stymied. And there's other things. We have a lot of residential construction, things like Troy's talking about. We have parking lots going in. Is an urgent situation and it is something we need to address and we are trying to address it. Uh, Mandy, I guess you can just start it off and just review where we're at with it and what you've tried to do and what some of the dilemmas we're dealing with.
Going where? So it has been on the city's website, in the Riverland News, the Citrus County Chronicle, the Ocala Star Banner, the Gainesville Sun, the Tampa Bay Times, Florida League of Cities website, Florida City County Managers Association website, Career Source Employee Florida Zip Recruiter, the American Planning Association website, and the Florida Planning Association. The date, we've spent nearly 2,500 in advertising costs. Um, as you know, we discussed at the workshop, we received two applications. Uh, the Ms. Walsh, who you had asked me to invite to the meeting tonight declined. Um, and withdrew her candidacy for this position. So there's that. So there's also some correspondence that I gave you. I did reach out, this was um back on March 18th. I reached out to the UF School of Landscape Architecture and Planning. I got a response back from them. It was if you look on that second page of the one that stapled. Uh, Kyle Dost from the school, he is the Assistant Program Director, Director and Internship Coordinator for the Department of Urban and Regional Planning at the University of Florida. He responded to me on March 19th. Said, your email was passed along to me by Joanna Sherburne. I'm the internship coordinator for the Department of Urban and Regional Planning. I'd be happy to pass along an internship position with you. Um, you all at the city of Danellen to our students. We have a number of students looking for summer internships, so this could be a good fit. And he was asking about some details and we really don't have an internship program in place. Um, my response to him was, we now have a highly qualified candidate that we're considering. Once a position is filled, I think we can work together to develop a formal internship program for the city to define the requirements process, et cetera. I'll keep you posted on our progress. His response to me, um, thanks so much for following up. That makes sense to me and exciting news that you have a strong candidate. Let's stay in touch as you onboard your new community development manager. I think our students would benefit immensely from an internship, internship opportunity with you down the road. I also reached out to Ken Metcalf, um, who we worked with quite a bit, um, amending the code, the Land Development Regulation specifically, if you remember, and some other projects. Um, I have reached out to him and Teresa had also um had a discussion with him. And his response was, I'm following up on my discussion with Teresa. I understand that you may have a good local candidate with solid professional experience. I believe would be, I believe that would be ideal since they would not be required to relocate and already know the area. What I have highlighted there is, given the challenges in Danellen, I recommend that you seek a planner with at least five years' experience. If your pending candidates don't work out. He also at that time suggested posting an ad with the Florida American Planning Association, which I did. Just shortly, or I had already done that at that point. Um, so that was, that, those were the remarks I wanted you to see from, from Ken Metcalf. And then Tara McHugh of East Central Regional, um, East Central Florida Regional Planning Council, who we also work with closely right now because we don't have someone in that department. Um, her response to me was, trust me, Danellen is not alone. We are providing technical assistance to other, to another jurisdiction that despite the nice salary for the position, still cannot seem to find anyone to fill their Planner One slash Two position. And then she offered to share um uh, our ad on her LinkedIn page or the, the association's LinkedIn page. So that's even another source um, that we've had to get the word out. So I just wanted to illustrate the efforts that have been made thus far. And I, and I'm just not sure what else to do.
If I just make a comment first and then I'll turn it over to counsel. Is I've been tracking this with Mandy very closely. And there is no question in my mind that we're doing everything we can do to get the word out there. And I'm not sure if there's just a lack qualified planners. If it is, we need to get the word out to young people to go to college because you certainly have a job waiting for you when you graduate. Looks like there is a dearth of people that have these kind of skills. And the one thing starting to look at what other cities are paying, and I do know Danellen is unique. And small and Danellen can only pay so much. But what we're asking is to have a individual with a degree in urban planning, an individual with five years' experience, and someone who's got some giddy up that's going to come in here and do some good for $60,000, $65,000. It ain't gonna happen. People with those kind of qualifications that we want, there's such a demand for those kind of people. They will not normally unless they just have to live here for some reason. They normally will make a lot more money other places. So, um, and I'm not even sure if we said pay them whatever. It seems like even some of these other places that are offering salaries 20, 25,000 more, they're still struggling to get candidates to come in. So we, uh, this is for anybody who's out there that has doubts in our our thoroughness and how we're trying to go about this. We, we are aware how important this is and, and we're trying. I was excited at the workshop. Uh, we had a person, as Teresa pointed out, that was a master planner in the city of Ocala. Who also had worked with the county, certainly knows all about Danellen and is familiar with it. And she actually put in an application. I found out that she had changed her mind and she withdrew her application and took a job apparently somewhere else. I tried to call her up and I tried to sweet talk her the best I could, sweet talk her to reconsider. And I had a wonderful conversation with her, 30 minutes. And I couldn't, I couldn't move the needle. She just simply said, can you at least give me a reason why? She says, I've just got an offer that pays more money. So, um, uh, here we are, we're kind of, Mandy, we're pretty much where we were, correct? And I just want to say, Teresa, you can feel the angst of Teresa. This isn't Teresa's, what she's supposed to do, but she has been trying to fill in doing this. And she's getting phone calls, she's getting people walking up to her window and she's getting questions and whatever that are beyond what she is supposed to be dealing with. And her recommendation at this point is, we're basically looking at telling everybody until we get this resolved, we don't have any answers for it. Uncommercial. Is that what you said, Teresa? So how do you think, how do you think that bodes with the city? How do you think that makes us? So anybody who says this is something that isn't urgent, uh, I do have to say, I, I do reject that statement. This is something that needs to be resolved. Okay, any comments by any of my fellow councilmen?
I have a question. It's kind of, kind of far out, but could you go back to Lisa Walsh and ask her how much would she want?
I did that already.
You did that already?
Bummer.
Vice Mayor?
Hey Teresa, I want to apologize to you. I know I've offered to come into your office and help you file papers, make copies, do whatever. And I know that's just not enough. Uh, this council has failed you. This council has failed the citizens of Danellen and we have failed the potential income that could come into the city because we don't have we, because we lost the good person that we had in that office. Not once. And, and, and the second gentleman, I can't remember his name, so sorry. It was, I just couldn't pronounce it. Matt, thank you. Um, you know, we didn't even give him enough of a chance. We did not even give him a chance to see where he could go. Or at least to help you until we could get this position filled. So I apologize for the lack of not being able to keep the staff that we need to keep. Because Mr. Smith and our zoning chair, she will tell you, she had no problems with him. He was excellent. Every time we had publics come in here, they stated that this was probably the best department that they had ever worked with in any city that they had done throughout the state of Florida and such, that it was professional and they did their jobs and they were a delight to work with. And we had other contractors come in and say these things, that it was done professionally. We had engineers from outside of our area come in and say, our team is top-notch and we lost that team. And I apologize. But we have to go forward. We have to get, I, I, I cannot, I am not going to go back to the days. When was it that the moratorium took place?
That was.
That was, that was when you were on council, right? When we had that moratorium.
It was the crash of 2008.
No, no, I thought it was the moratorium that we had throughout the city.
Never had a moratorium throughout the city, not for
No, commercial.
It was only for the extended property at the Blue Run Ranches, was it called?
No, it had to go throughout the whole city. No, it was throughout the whole city. Yes ma'am, it was. I'm sorry, you're, you're incorrect on that. But, but anyway, so anyway, so I was, okay, but anyways, what I'm saying is, the more, we've had a moratorium in this city before and it cost us. I know for a fact, the hotel that took years extra to get here. We cannot afford to have a moratorium in the city again. We, as a city council, have to figure this out. And if it means just have to figure it out, we need to let our HR department do everything she can and anything we can do to help her get it. And, and let me ask you this, Mandy. Could it have been, was there an issue that because the city council had to vote on who gets to come in front of us, did we take too long?
No, we, we got her application, um, I think it was March 25th. So the week before.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, I think I had it about a week.
I, I just didn't know if, if we were having to sit on applications. I mean, I know we can always do special meetings. But if an HR person can actually interview someone a little bit faster than having to wait for five council members, I was just wondering if that was an issue.
No, I, I had it about a week.
That's, okay, okay. Um, let's try to move this on now. The, the only thing I want to make the comment to the Vice Mayor is people that were employed for the city who decided to either retire or resign or whatever, off the heels of the election. That's totally their choice. And I do not take or assume any responsibility whatsoever for them making a personal choice based on what they think is best for them. So if they wanted to remain here and see how this new council operates and see if it works for them, fine. They wanted to say, I don't like the election. I'm going out the door and that's their decision. And I, nor do I think anyone else who's on this council that was part of that election takes any responsibility for their personal decision.
And I said this council. I did not say three individuals. I said the council in general.
I was, I made a statement, I was looking forward to try to work with the team and show them, show them what we're all about. And I really believe if they would have stayed here and they would have seen what this new council is bringing to this area and the excitement, I think they, I think they made an error.
Well, and I said, the city council as a whole. I did not say three individuals, sir. So please let that be known.
Okay, very good. Okay, um, so I guess that's just nothing more than a council. There's nothing to vote on. Mandy, Ms. Roberts, I will tell you that if you do happen to get a candidate that really looks promising, please don't hesitate to let me know. I will not hesitate to call a special council meeting if, if needed.
I also, um, am going to reach back out to George Forbes with FCCMA and see if he can provide any assistance in this area. He was willing to do that for a city administrator position. So I'm going to find out if he's willing to assist us in this area as well.
I'd ask Mandy to look into that today.
Okay. Uh, everyone, thank you for your patience, but as you know, this is some important things and it has to be discussed. I wish we were just selling peanuts and beer, but uh, this is some.
I had a beer.
This is some heavy duty stuff and we have to hash, we have to hash it out. We have to let everybody say what they need to say. And there can be no stone unflipped. Okay, we're, we're getting through it, guys. We're at number 19 council liaison reports. And any comments that counsel would like to make. Start with you, Ms. Cabbage.
Um, nothing to report and I'm going to hold my comments because I think I've made enough comments today. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Ms. Ken? Comments? Okay. Vice Mayor?
Play is on. Um, I think I already gave the TPO report about when we met with Rob here at council. I gave it on Wednesday. Kind of a little pretty early, but that's okay. And um we just need to follow up, uh, to get that meeting set up with the county road department.
Right, and I, I did leave a call in to Rob this morning. But I didn't hear back from him, but so, no worries. Um, and, um, you know, I'm, I'm kind of excited about the beautification of the, um, you know, I know a lot of people are wanting us to work on the beautification things and such. Um, and, and, you know, they gave a nice presentation on Wednesday about some areas that needed, you know, some love, which we all do. Um, but I'd also like to maybe get, um, the council to start maybe looking at the areas that have been beautified already and to give some positive feedback. Danellin Precinct Church, for instance, they've redone their landscaping. Um, the gentleman on Powell Road who has the two houses side by side. Um, those houses are, um, really coming along and, and, and looking a lot better. Um, so, and I know that other towns do things like they have a beautification, they have a landscaping contest. So, um, I think instead of maybe trying to go at it, um, just with through the, uh, the duck that turns into a swan or some, you know, what? some, you know, the ugly duckling that turns into a swan. Maybe we should start off with the swans and see if the ugly ducklings will want to come up with them. So I think that might be another way for us to go and work with our CDBG. You know, people with them know those kind of things would be happening. So, but I'm excited about the enthusiasm from the citizens of Dunellen that live within our, you know, live here. So that's all I have to say.
Right, just have a couple of comments and I'll just go for the big items right here. At first, I would like to compliment our new employee, Julianne, for getting us totally up to speed on our minutes. We have been three months behind on our minutes for two years. But I understand we are officially up to date, right? So if anybody wants to right now, there's about four months of minutes that if you want to have nothing to do, you, you can, you can go through it. I do want to mention that it is my understanding, I am not sure if this is true, that we do have a contract with the state as it pertains to the boat ramp. And that parking over there is a 25 year contract agreement. It self-renews. And I hear in October, that renewal is due. And if that is true, we need to take a look at that agreement and find out what we agreed to 25 years ago. And if there's anything that we should have that we don't have, or if there's anything we gave away that we shouldn't have given away, that, if that is true, that really needs to be looked at.
That is something that I looked at extensively, I think maybe four years ago, three or four years ago. And had a very long, it, it came up when the, there was a discussion regarding paid parking and parking meters. I would have to take a look at it again, but I do recall the contract being pretty ironclad and not providing the city much flexibility in terms of the contract itself. That doesn't mean that the city, of course, can't try to renegotiate the agreement.
What I'm talking about, self-renews for another 25 years if we do nothing.
There's not, and there's not, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm saying is there's not a termination clause to terminate the way out of the agreement and start from scratch. So it would take an impetus of the city to approach and try to negotiate it, renegotiate it. So I can work with Mandy to take a look at it.
I would suggest that we take a look at that and see what rights we may have given away and what rights we can take back. Things are a little different 25 years later. Things will be greatly different 25 years henceforth. And our inability to derive any revenue from this area because of that agreement needs to be right. Okay, I just want a couple of comments. I want, I want to compliment all the people that have made really nice presentations. I saw the, at the workshop, the Little League presentation by Adam Parker was outstanding. Council, what we have to do is a good presentation is only a good presentation. And once the presentation's over, it's up to us to seize upon some of those ideas and champion those ideas and somebody say, I'm going to do this and I'm going to follow up on that. Like I say, a good meeting or a good thought is only a good idea, a good meeting, but it's what you do afterwards. The Little League obviously is doing the best they can as a volunteer organization. But somehow, some way, they need some help. What we may or may not do or can do legally or realistically, I don't know. But the man came here and pleaded with us to get involved. I think Susan Jones came in here and spent a lot of time going through our website. She saw a lot of updates and things that need to be done. Somehow, some way, that's a great idea. I know there's a lot of things in there that need to be looked at. We need to come up with somebody or some ways or someone to go through that website and start making some recommendations how we can get it up to speed. I think the entire city is engaged with Kathy Dunn's beautification program. Council needs to do everything we can to facilitate that and to encourage that, not to stymie it, not to tell them all the problems with it and all the reasons why you can't do this and you can't do that. Our job is to find ways to get things done, not to identify problems. Identifying problems is the easy part of it. Finding a way to get it done is the more difficult time. One of the things that was thrown out there, I thought it was kind of interesting. Julianne Mendoza mentioned that, like you see right now, it's nine o'clock at night. And believe me, we're trying to get through this stuff. Possibly considering a earlier start time where we can do our business before it gets too late. I like those sort of things. So let's, let's try to focus on the good ideas. One last, this is my last thing. I've been contacted that the annual Rainbow River cleanup scheduled for May 15th. And that is something that has been highly successful. I think it was suspended for a year because of COVID. I understand it's going to be kicked in. It's an idea for you to participate, get in a boat, get on someone else's boat and go up and down the river and pick up some trash, have a nice cookout. And whoever finds the most trash gets a prize and whoever finds the most unusual item gets a prize. Most unusual item, as you probably heard from a couple of years ago, someone found a prosthetic leg at the bottom of the river. Did they ever give that leg back to the guy who ever lost it?
Yeah.
It is?
I think, I think you heard about it and they found him and he got his leg back.
Wow. I'm surprised that wasn't front page on the Riverland News. That's too good, too good. Okay, guys, that's that's my comments. I can write to the point. Any department reports?
In the interest of time, I have a written report from Teresa that I could email to you guys, or do you want me to go through it?
Do you have highlights or?
Yeah, just how about that, instead of me reading through the whole thing?
All right, while she's doing that.
I will tell you, I did conduct interviews last Thursday for the assistant clerk position. I originally had five very qualified candidates, one dropped out sort of at the last minute, left me bored. I had the city administrator and the finance officer from Bellevue come over and sit in on those interviews with me to help me evaluate those applicants because they have a, a long history in municipal government, obviously, and a lot of experience and they can be very non-biased, you know, not being on staff here. So that was great that they offered to do that for me. And I have one person in mind that I'm going to make a conditional offer of employment to. And we'll begin the, the background check and the drug screen. And then so hopefully within a couple of weeks I'll have someone.
For everybody that's your assistant.
Yes.
Which, that would be a major move forward.
Yes, it's going to be, it's going to be a huge help. And just to remind you all that next month, May 10th, when we have our council meeting, we're going to need to have a CRA meeting as well. We usually do that at five before the regular council meeting. That's all I have.
Teresa?
Building and zoning department, we currently have 10 active permits for single family residents in Dunellen Heights. We have issued four certificated occupancy for same. I've had several of those homes, the residents that have purchased them no sooner than they were completed and CO'd come in to pull additional permits for things that they would like to do. There's four additional single family residence permits throughout the city. All Terrain Agricultural Services owned by Kevin Shepherd. He is the property manager for Gissy Rainbow River Ranch and supervised the demolition of the existing dock permitted and performed by Hodgkin Outdoor there out of Winter Garden, I believe. Building official Jimmy Strickland contracted by the city. And Mr. Shepherd provided photos to staff for the record and building official confirmed the crew was doing a good job at the demolition with erosion control and sedimentation control. They are subsequent to the final inspection. Mr. Shepherd paid and picked up the permit for the, the new dock. And there's a pad, but not it, and a four foot access, but it's going to be pavers up in the river corridor. Mr. Shepherd paid for that and we had held that pending the demolition of the original dock. Commercial construction, all these continues. Dental office continues at Rainbow Square. Darrow King at the former Carmella's passed all of their inspections. A temp CO was issued to them during the COVID emergency for the outdoor seating. And building and zoning has issued 180 permits to date. That's 45 permits since the last report last month. There are several miscellaneous things going on. Rainbow Springs Art Festival was held, Dunellen Boomtown, both successful projects. The historic board meets April 13th, tomorrow night. They are going to consider three certificates of appropriateness application for property owners requesting fencing. The planning commission meets April 20th. We'll post that agenda sometime tomorrow. The application for special exception to construct the solar farm quasi-digital public hearing will go on. There was a meeting today amongst staff and the ECF RPC and DEP. We finalized some matters that needed to be taken care of on their part. And John Patterson will produce a new staff report. We'll know the outcome of that in a couple of days and of course, you'll all get to hear it on the 20th. The comprehensive plan, they'll continue to discuss that. That'll be another item on the planning commission agenda. Dan Adams reported for code enforcement. Continuing on hold due to staffing or delayed due to COVID. Two commercial code enforcement cases, Swampys, the property is owned by Keith Baxter. And then the Rainbow Adventure kayak, which is a commercial property up on the, on 41. We'll get back to those as soon as we are available. And then the residential deck was delayed due to COVID from Mr. Baxter. Finally, Dan reported that property maintenance and other code issues for March 2021, he had six new cases of code enforcement. Of those six, he closed five. And he currently has nine open cases.
Okay. Dan?
We're currently, as of today, in one of my two favorite activities of the fiscal year, our annual audit. The auditors will be here for probably about a week and a half with presentation, anticipated presentation to council at the meeting in May. That's all I have.
Wow. All right, council, and we go to Andrew, but I do want to oh, chief. Chief, before you, we come on up and before you speak, one of the things I was going to say, the council tonight by a tied vote, took no action. So right now, we took no action. The issues that we have remain without the council addressing that. Right now, the chief doesn't have a direction to start repairing what's there. Go ahead and move into the perch and figure out a way to do it. If we say all in favor of adjournment and we adjourn, we basically given any direction. I just, chief, I just wanted to say that before you give your talk and we'll see what happens.
Thank you.
Okay.
But the workshop, that's the woman Covage asked me for a report. I have given each one of you a report. And on the most important, she asked for the most important thing, of course, is the events where we have the mold. And we have finally got a contractor, our air conditioner and specialist, who will go in and he uses the words that, diffusers. So he is going to go in and put in a lot of diffusers. So, and that will be done next week. And that, that cost of around 12 to $1,400. So I do have that. If you would like, I'll go over the report with you. It is eight pages, seven pages long. But each of you have a copy of it. And I give you a copy. And it goes into detail the problems that we have at the present building. And so all I'm asking is directions. Give me some directions to go in. And I think that would be the responsibility of the council to give me some directions to go in. Right now, we're back to zero. So if we we hire another I can assure you that no contractor is going to give us any price to do anything without seeing it from an architect. I've already tried that. Two architect, I mean, I'm sorry, two contractors to come in. And they said, we got to have plans. Now then, second part. The chief of the fire department for Marion County, Chief Banta, sent me this. As a matter of fact, I received it today and he asked me to pass it on to the council. And first he apologizes that we didn't know it, that some of his response times for the city of Dunellen was lagging. And the reason for this is they tried to implement a non-transport unit going to calls where people just had coughs or flu-like symptoms. Of course, that delayed the ambulance from getting there because most people that they went to needed an ambulance. So on 3/24 of 21, they did away with that service. And now their response time is back to normal, so to speak. So that is what I have from Chief Banta. His apologies that they did try something new. We'd think in theory it would work, but it did not work and they disbanded it. Going back to normal, how they work normal. And I would like to say, when we was at the Taylor Park this morning, the residents there that we met was highly complimentary of the fire department. And their responses in there, they had a couple of issues with them, they talked to them and the issues was resolved. So it's nice to know that the Marion County Fire Department did listen to the residents of the park.
Was that it for the department heads? Troy?
I think I've taken up enough council's time this evening, but just to give you a, a quick update. Adam with the baseball league had mentioned to us that, not this weekend, but weekend after, they're going to have several hundred, if not a few thousand vehicles coming up and down through the ball field there. We were able to get our contract grader out there today with an extra truck of lime rock to get that road smoothed out for them. So hopefully they'll have a big turnout at that event. Other than that, I think we've touched on everything.
I have one more thing, Troy, that we, we talked about it, you may have forgotten. I wanted you to go through this wayside sign installation at Lurum Park.
Oh, yeah, real, real brief now.
We'll just show the pictures and you can just talk about what y'all did.
That's Bill Vivert putting the signs together. The RRC had ordered in these informational signs for Blue Run. Actually had them delivered to our shop. And then, so as not to interrupt with our daily routine, they showed up there to assemble them. they showed up there to assemble them, wax them and have them prepped for the day of installation. And, uh, I have to admit, they're very precise. Uh, Bill didn't let that tape measure leave out of his hand all day. So, yes, uh, and that's them again, working on it. Uh, the, I believe that was the state that brought that trolley and auger in. That was a back saver. Um, there was one hole we decided to try to use the postal diggers on. We went right back to using the auger. So, yeah, that was good teamwork there. Um, uh, as normal, you'll see me getting on the telephone right there, trying to dodge the bullet of having to actually work, but no. Um, the, the crew is actually setting the, uh, they, they set the signs. They got them leveled. It was a great partnership, a great day. And it really, it wasn't even a full day. It was only a couple of hours. The mayor was there with us. I had, uh, our employee Matt Pullo. I got to see an old, good friend of mine from, uh, about thirty years ago that I used to work with at the Army Corps of Engineers, who is now a park ranger for the state, Kent Lambert. So, uh, it was a good day. And you can see they're very precise in getting those in. And I imagine that they are still standing today with as much as we put around them. I don't think they moved it an inch. So, and, uh, we also have a couple of more signs coming in in the near future, uh, to get installed on pre-existing posts, so it won't be so, uh, challenging. But that bench there was donated by a young lady, her husband. And that was one of his favorite spots, if I'm correct about that. That was one of his favorite spots along the walkway there. You could see the river is to the back and to the front is a, a, uh, a pond or a marsh area there. And so she selected the site and, uh, the bench is in. And then, uh, the, uh, who was that that brought that beast in? Greenways and Trails had to show up with a bigger, better auger to drill the last two holes. So we started with a postal digger, moved to a manual auger and then this machine here shows up and, uh, made quick work of it. Um, and then, of course, Duke Energy was there, this young lady on the right side of the screen, and our newspaper reporter, uh, was there. Um, so as you can see, there's a picture of the whole team. It was a great day. All right, so, and hope to have many more events like that in the future.
Good stuff. Um, thank you, Troy. Wonderful. Before we go to Andrew, I, I do want to tell coun- council that this police station concept has not been resolved. We own a six-thousand-square-foot building that's sitting there, no occupancy, costing the city money. We, we have a police building that's in disrepair. And right now, if I was the chief, I'd be very frustrated that he does not, if we walk out this door, he does not know for the next thirty days what he's supposed to do and what the police are supposed to do. So I don't know if we can do anything tonight, but everybody better put their thinking caps on because this problem is there. It's not going away. We have a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar commitment sitting there right now. It's an empty building. And we all know that buildings that go unoccupied deteriorate rapidly. So we might sit here for another thirty days and readdress this. Or if someone comes up with a brainstorm of what a solution is, I won't hesitate at any time to call special meetings that we need to get things done. I feel very uncomfortable tonight adjourning this meeting knowing that we have basically defaulted on what we want to do. You know, one way or another, we've got to make a decision. Either do it, don't do it, pull the plug. Coming to the point, or has, it's going to have to be a decision as.
Mr. Mayor? I make a motion.
Yes?
Thank you. Mayor, I would make a motion that we accept staff's recommended order of preference as presented during the April seventh, twenty-twenty-one city council workshop and authorize staff to engage in competitive negotiations with Parton Architecture purely to s- see how much it would cost for them to go to the new Ohio Street Police Department location, proposed location.
What this is? Asking them to give us a bid?
Just a bid. We do not go into negotiations for start dates with them, but purely for fact-finding negotiations to see how much it will cost. If I could pick up the phone and call them myself, I would. But because we're city, we cannot, so.
Do we have a second?
I ask that we do that, just to pick up the phone.
I second it. Yeah, I think it's been thoroughly discussed. Favor?
Mayor, we would need to take public comment on that.
Okay, public comment on this. Here we go again. We're again seeing if we want to find out. Some expense to it, yes, Reverend? I know you told me to call you Tom.
Okay. Tom Welch, P O Box one forty-three, Dunellen, Florida, three, four, four, three, zero. Um, I can appreciate the amount of discussion that has gone on this evening and to this. And I think that it would be irresponsible of this council not to at least talk to the architect to see what they were charged since that will cost the city nothing. Discussion costs nothing. So to let this go by without even discussing it, taking into consideration that it costs nothing to discuss would be very irresponsible. Thank you.
I just wanted to point out to you all, um, I, I tried to spell this out as best I could in the agenda summary, but I want to read it to you. So everyone is very, very clear. Um, the review committee will submit a recommended order of preference to the city council at the next convenient city council meeting. The council will make its selection. The city will then engage in compa- in competitive negotiation as provided by the C C N A based on their approved order of preference. After staff concludes negotiations with the firm selected, staff will present the results of the negotiations to the city council with its recommendation. If the city council determines that staff is unable to negotiate a satisfactory contract with the firm considered to be the most qualified at a price the city determines to be fair, competitive and reasonable, negotiations with that firm or firms shall be formally terminated. So just to reiterate, you're not binding yourself to any cost by allowing us to try and negotiate a contract with them to see what it would cost for them to do the work.
If I can speak to this, council members. This concept is very similar to the concept of the Nine Island discussion, where we just simply were asking, can we check to see if it's possible and if it will be put on the Florida forever with no obligation, no nothing? So those of you that oppose that understand hopefully now that this argument exactly applies to this. This is, can we investigate and check and discuss and see what the numbers are? And from that point, we will then decide what we want to do. I was for the Nine Island concept. Like Tom said, it's an, it's a no, there's no loss to checking it out. I am a proponent of trying to get some answers on the police station. So, uh, I think, I think, uh, I think it's an interesting parallel how we have two topics that, uh, actually the arguments are very similar. We're not, if that comes back fifty-five thousand for an architecture design and this council says there's no way we want to pay that, then it's over with. All right, so I, I think, uh, this has been, so we had a motion, we've had a second, we've had discussion. Here we go again. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Go with an aye.
Huh?
I'm going to go with an aye today.
You're going to go?
Aye.
I thought you said deny.
No, aye, A Y E.
Aye.
Aye.
And Ms. Kenny?
Um, I've, I hope that there is some assurance that there is no more money or to be earlier, if we're talking to architectures, they're offered is, like, who have just described.
Your vote is amazing. It passes unanimous. Now you see why we're here till nine-twenty at night, okay? See, it's worth it, right? Is it worth it to hang in there in battle? There you go. Okay, um, Mr. Hand, I hope you have absolutely nothing to say.
Since I'm always the last to go, over the years, I have learned the value of brevity and I will be consistent with my practice and be very brief. Um, first, I pulled up that, uh, nineteen ninety-six contract with Fish and Wildlife. I will look at that, discuss it with Mandy. It actually goes back to an easement that was granted in nineteen sixty-nine. So this is a very, very old, uh, arrangement. Um, at least it started off the inception from a very, very long time ago. Um, but, uh, being with Mandy on that. Um, other issues?
You're talking about the ramp?
Pardon me? Yes, yes.
And my concern is the agreements that are in place seem to stymie our ability to, uh, look at any revenue sources from either the ramp or the parking or whatever. So I would like to look at that and see what the impediments are.
That's generally speaking, and I'll give a full, either staff or myself in the future, but, um, if, if Manny so directs. But it, it's because it's tied to federal funds, uh, in the past, so. But in any case, we'll, we'll talk about it.
You would agree with me, just sitting back and allowing it to renew without addressing it for another twenty-five years?
It is very much worth a look. And several years ago, when we looked at it, it was worth a look at that point as well. As far as anything else that I have for you, I, I sent out to, to Mandy and I, I don't believe it's, she's had the ability or had the opportunity to send it to you all yet, but I sent a copy of, uh, House Bill four oh-three. That was the, um, and I sent this coverage copy as well. I don't know if everybody has it yet, but if it's not, it's coming your way. And I, I sent the tax to the bill and the current status has been unchanged since March thirty-first. I wasn't able to find any kind of rescheduling for a vote, but it has been temporarily postponed on second reading as of March thirty-first. So there hasn't been any action taken on it since then. But, um, for councils request, I'll continue to keep an eye on it and provide future updates. Other than that, I have nothing else.
Next on the agenda is, Verma, do I have a motion to adjourn?
See you later, alligator.
Any discussion? Unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Thank you very much.